Who?
Baby.
Baby. Oh.
I texted like two people, my wife and occasionally a buddy of mine. I was just opening up in their texts.
I fell for you. I've never watched an entire television show. But I've watched every bit of it. Well, I gotta remember Saturday Night Live. What channel is that on? You see, I can go back and pick that up off the timeline. I gotta do that.
It feels like six inches in the back.
I wanna have a great sense of humor, laughing. That'll be the one.
Once it's gone, it always spits out a problem.
Okay, ready? Good evening and welcome to the October the 11th, 2016, regular city commission meeting. Would advise you, if you have a cellphone, if you would silence it, we'll begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of meditation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've got three proclamations this evening to begin with. Jennifer Cherry. Go on up, please. You betcha. One in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and with approximately 15.5 million children exposed to domestic violence every year. And when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leaves a mark on the family, friends, and the community at large. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to a society as a whole, but particularly women and children, and the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And the United States President, Congress, and other agencies have expressed a commitment to eliminate domestic violence, and we must dedicate ourselves to protect valuable members of our society. Now therefore, I, Mayor Larry Daddicki, the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
The mic is yours.
Thank you. It's an extremely important month, and I've been blessed to be a part of the Alliance Against Family Violence. We have gotten involved in the community quite a bit this year, and it has been an absolute pleasure. I'm sure you'll see us around wearing our purple. And the next time that you think about October, hopefully you're thinking about both breast cancer and domestic violence. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Cromer. Welcome.
Thank you.
Food Day, October the 24th, 2016, connects us to real food, which is local, healthy, and sustainable, and challenges members of our community to eat real, whether it is one ingredient, one meal a day, or every day. And Food Day, October 24th, educates and inspires the greater Kansas City community to create a stronger, healthier, more accessible, and more sustainable local food system. And the health and well-being of our citizens is a primary concern for the City of Leavenworth. Replacing obesity and diet-related diseases by promoting safe and healthy diets is a critical factor in improving citizens' overall health. And the Leavenworth Farmers Market has adopted the Double Up Program to provide for healthy eating for members of the Supplemental Nutritious Assistance Program by matching their purchases of fresh produce up to $25. Now therefore, I, Larry Daddicki, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2016, as Food Day. Congratulations. The mic is yours. Thank you, Mayor. You know, the farmers market may be the most visible organization in food distribution and for food proclamation. And at the risk of missing someone, I want to list some agencies for you that really are involved in trying to help feed people better. And let's start with Backpack Buddies. They really do do a great function for kids in school. They get a wholesome meal for every weekend if they're in certain income brackets. The community meals that our churches provide throughout the community, and I'll tell you, the farmers market supports at least four of them because at 11:45 every Saturday, they show up to pick up any of the food that we have that did not sell and can't be carried over for the next market. So we give that to them. Meals on Wheels. Almost all of our social organizations participate in Meals on Wheels. It takes a good meal to a shut-in in town. The Leavenworth Assistance Center, Catholic Social Services, Alliance Against Family Violence, all those organizations provide food to needy people. Our service clubs, Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, in fact, if you saw in yesterday's paper, I believe, we've got a Rotarian gonna be collecting food out in front of Dylan's. The Salvation Army, Shelter of Hope, Leavenworth Mission of Hope, and many more. So if you just look around our community, we have a lot of organizations who are trying to make it better for everyone to eat, and we're proud to be a part of that, Mayor. Annette Taylor.
Whereas the citizens of Leavenworth stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, and build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, family, and adults, engages families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. The City of Leavenworth is committed to investing to the health and safety of all of our young people, to provide expanding learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore, I, Larry Daddicki, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2016, as Lights On After School.
Congratulations. The mic is yours. I'd like to say something.
I'm one of the site directors at Anthony, well, I am the site director at Anthony Elementary School, excuse me. Just to give you a little background information on the Horizon Kid After School program, we are underneath the Leavenworth Public School Education Foundation, and we have four programs at the local elementary school. So that would be Anthony, of course, Lawson, David Brewer, and Henry Leavenworth. Okay? Our program is designed to help the working parents, and we provide a safe, educational, and fun environment. You know, we also provide convenient hours in a location where kids, you know, they don't have to go from point A to point B, but they're in the schools, that's where we are, and then they'll go right into class. Also, in regards to the Lights On After School, it's the annual celebration that we have been taking part for the last 10 years, and so we're proud to continue to do that. And this year, we're going to have a Wellness Walk. We're going to do our traditional lightbulb art that we do every year, and also we will be doing, making a craft, a Halloween light-up craft. So we're proud to be a part of the Leavenworth community and having an after-school and before-school program. But at this time, on behalf of my boss and our program director, Kim Taylor, who's not here, that was going to accept this, I'm just kinda like filling in, and the staff and the families, I would like to thank everyone and for your support and for recognizing the importance of after-school programs. Thank you very much.
Our next piece of business is old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion?
I move we accept the minutes of the September 27, 2016, regular meeting and October 4, 2016, special meeting.
Second. Have a motion and second again voted Commissioner Weekly?
Aye.
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 Fastest five to zero. Second consideration ordinance is number 8014, increasing the amount required for sealed proposals for capital improvement projects. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is a continuation from the last time this was read, whereby we're changing the city purchasing policies, and one thing in that policy was done by ordinance, so to make that change, we have to make a change in ordinance. There's been no changes since it appeared before you last.
Is there any discussion?
No.
This is a roll call vote. Begin with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Fastest five to zero. Ordinance number 8015, wastewater rate increase.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this again is the wastewater rate increase, second consideration ordinance. There's been no changes since it was presented to you. If you have any questions about that, Mr. McDonald will be here to field those questions.
Any questions? Mike?
No.
If not, this is a roll call vote also. Begin with Commissioner Weekly?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Fastest five to zero. Ordinance 8016, refuge rate increase.
Again, no changes since the previous reading on this item, and Mr. McDonald again can answer any questions you may have.
Seeing no questions, this is also a roll call. Begin with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Fastest five to zero. Under new business, citizen participation, this is where you're gonna come up to the podium and speak to us on any item that's on your mind or the receipt of petitions. This does not include anything that's on the agenda. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item number six, consider construction of a training facility at Sherman Army Airfield.
Dean, do you wanna come on up? Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the item for you tonight is to get commission approval for a new training building at the Sherman Army Airfield, which is the city's municipal airport at Fort Leavenworth. The city was approached by Mr. Ayers about the need for additional space, primarily dealing with his flight instruction operations up there. This action tonight would be pending all city and fort full and total approvals, so Mr. Ayers still has a little work to do as far as building permits and approvals, but he'd like to get going pretty quick, so the city has no objection to the building, and then we'll just figure out how to get the permits in the next couple of days. So Mr. Ayers is here to talk about the building and answer any questions you may have about the facility.
Only question that I have, just so everybody rests peacefully, that the city is not investing anything in this, or are we?
The cost of the building will be the responsibility of Mr. Ayers.
That's all that I have.
And my name is Dean Ayers. I am the FBO manager, that's the fixed base operator for Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. I've been up on Fort for about 35 years flying, and I was given the opportunity to take over the fixed base operator about nine years ago, and I wanna thank the city for letting me do that. Two years ago, we constructed ten new hangars up there, and it's been very, very successful. The reason for this building is, I have three airplanes in training, we've got five instructors up there, we've got a pretty small room, we're kinda out of room. But also what goes with that is, is that in the past, we've had to have public access going through the hangars, and it was something that was bestowed upon us because the army made us move some parking lot around. What this building will enable us to do is to let the public enter the airport without having to go through the hangar. So that's really gonna be helped there. The Amish built my hangars up there, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job. They built them in 13 days. I've already made arrangements with the army up there to get them on post, so there's not a problem going through the gates. I've got the bids all in place, the contractors all in place, I've submitted my deposits in. What we need now is basically just the approval from the commissioners, and then it goes on to the army. I've basically already spoken to persons up there, and they've basically, when I had located verbally, but we've gotta go through the formalities.
Right. Correct. Any question to Mr. Ayers?
One tribute question, Mr. Ayers. How long's your runway? I've had discussions with a couple peoples, put the office up.
Not a problem. It's 5,900 feet, however, they've got what they call the displaced threshold, not getting into the hieroglyphics of it, but it's where the planes can only land within like 5,600 feet. So the additional four feet down there, we're not allowed to use.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think any addition up there is prosperity for Leavenworth and also for the airfield, so I fully support it.
Yeah. I'd like that it improves also your ADA access.
Agreed. If there's no other discussion, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider that we approve construction of the training facility at Sherman Army Airfield as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Again voted Commissioner Weekly?
Aye.
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 Fastest five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is a public hearing for unsafe and dangerous structures. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Still move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
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 Public hearing is now open.
Julie Hurley will handle this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the activities of code enforcement staff is to evaluate structures that are deemed unfit or unsafe for habitation within the community, and that determination is made based on KSA 17-4759, and that states that structures are deemed unfit for human use or habitation if conditions exist in such structure which are dangerous or injurious to the health, safety, or morals of the occupants of such buildings, or the residents within the City of Leavenworth, or which have a blinding influence on properties in the area. There are a list of criteria that is contained within that statute that has been adopted by the city for use in our determination. The City Commission did review this list of dangerous structures at a meeting in July, and staff has proceeded with the required notification and publication of all of these properties, and so tonight, we're proceeding with a public hearing. We'll go through each of these properties. We've got 14 on the list. I believe most of the property owners are here, and then we will, you'll be taking a vote on the resolution to proceed with demolition of the structures, or to remove them, or to give certain properties an extension to work on improvements if you deem appropriate. Before we get into them, I will say that staff would recommend an extension of 45 days if you do decide to give any of these properties an extension, just for the sake of keeping consistent with all of the properties, so that we can keep everything on the same cycle if any are given an extension. So 45 days would be the recommendation of staff, should you decide that that's appropriate. The first property is 50 Logan Street. The owner of this property has indicated to staff that they intend to make repairs, but as of this date, no repairs have been made. The structure did have some fire damage. The picture on the screen is from April of this year. You can see there's damage to the roof. You can see there's some charring around some of the windows from that fire damage. And as of October 4th, so last Tuesday, staff revisited the property, and there'd been no improvements at that time, and no building permits have been pulled as of this date.
If you'd like staff to go through each property, we can do that, and then have owners come up at the end, or if you'd like the owners to come up after each one.
I think we need to go through all 14, and then we'll go back to the owners.
Okay. Go through them all at once. The second property is 426 Lament Street. This property did have a signed remediation agreement with the property owner dated in June 10th of this year. All of the items listed on that remediation agreement have been completed. Staff has reviewed that, and the owner has indicated that he does have a buyer for the property. It's currently unoccupied right now, but he does apparently have a buyer for it, and so that would get this property occupied again. As of last week, the new windows that he installed still had plywood over them just to protect them. He'd had some vandalism problems with new windows installed previously getting broken out, but on a visit today, the windows are all unboarded, and the house is looking pretty good. So again, all of the items that were on that remediation agreement have been completed, and this is one property that staff would recommend taking off of the demolition list since those items have been completed. The third property is 655 South Street. This property, as you can see on the aerial image, there are actually two houses located on this parcel. The house to the west is occupied by the owner, I believe, and the house to the east is unoccupied, and that is the one that has the damage and that we're specifically talking about here. This picture is from April, and there has been no change, this is a different view, but there's been no change and no contact from the owner, no permits pulled since that The next property is 776 Thornton Street. Again, on this one, there's some pretty substantial damage, and there has been no contact from the owner, and no changes made to this property, no permits pulled as of last week. The next property is 113 Chestnut Street. Again, on this one, no contact from the owner, no permits pulled, and no change as of last week. This one has some, again, some substantial damage to the roof and other siding materials, some site issues with it, and as of last week, you can see that there's really no change, no improvement to the property. Next property is 616 Spruce Street. Again, there's been no change, no contact from the owner, and no permits pulled on this. You can see some pretty extensive damage to the roof in this one. There is a detached garage on this property that's included in this demolition. And this picture is of, as of last week, showing that there's been no change to it. Next property is 717 Olive Street. This property does have a couple of detached structures in addition to the main house. This is one of them. As of last week, there had been a roof added to the detached garage out back, and then as of today, looks like the roof has been completed and some doors added and painted. I will say that there was no building permit pulled on this and no communication with staff. I believe that from our, looking at the property, that this work to the garage is the only work that's taken place, but I know that the owner is here and could probably speak to his plans for that. Next property is 717 Ottawa Street. This property, the only change that we've had is that the owner has boarded up the windows just to deter squatting activity. I guess he'd had some problem with that in the past, just because the house was fairly accessible and had some people in there, and so he had boarded up the windows. There's some additional junk on the porch as of last week, but there is, I believe, no attempt from the owner to make repairs to this one. Next property is 800 Osage Street. This is one property that I'll note has been on a previous demolition list and was removed. There's pretty significant damage to the roof structure. It's been open for quite a while. As of last Tuesday, there had been no change on this one, and then as of yesterday, our code enforcement staff noted that the owner had started working on the roof of this property, and a building permit was issued today for the roof work that has started. But I believe that is all that has taken place so far. The next two properties I'll talk about together, they're on the same property, it's 856 and 860 Cherokee Street. These two homes, yeah, like I said, they're two narrow houses that are on the same property. There is a signed remediation agreement for each house from the property owner, you've got that in your packet. For 856 Cherokee Street, a building permit was issued to remove and rebuild the front stoop, and for partial siding replacement, as of today, the work is not quite complete. We'll get to those pictures. And then on 860 Cherokee, there is, again, a signed remediation agreement, and there was a building permit issued to remove the roof cover on the front porch and replace the roof, and the work is not complete on that either.
On the first one, 856, you said the work is not quite complete?
It's not complete.
Is it? Anything complete?
Let's see. The, the, the house in the foreground is 860, the house in the background is 856, so the porch has been removed, the siding has not been replaced, so they're partially through it. The, I believe the owner's hearing can maybe speak to his intentions with it. I believe on 860, there's been some replacement of the roof, as you can tell here on the west side. See if we've got a better picture. But yeah, there, he has been working on it, and he can speak to his plans to complete that. Those were the previous pictures. Okay. The next property is 1107 North 10th Street. This property, there's been no change on it, and no contact from the owner. I believe that the owner is actually deceased on this one. There, on this one, again, there's a detached garage on the property that would be included. And this picture is from last Tuesday. You can see that there's been no change from April. 1158 Canton Street, this one, we had a signed remediation agreement on, and all of the items on that remediation agreement have been completed. This house actually looks really nice now. You can see in the picture, they've got it in good shape and ready for someone to live in. So staff would recommend that this one be removed from the list as well. And our final property is 1261 High Drive. This one, again, there has been no change, no building permits pulled, and no contact from the owner. You can see in this picture, there's some pretty substantial holes in the roof that would need roof replacement. And this picture is from last week. You can see that no work- You can see that no work has been done on that. So again, staff would recommend that 426 Limit and 1158 Canton be removed from the list as all of the items on the remediation agreement have been completed for those two. And again, as I said previously, should you decide to grant an extension to any property owner, staff would recommend an extension time of forty-five days. And if you have any questions, I can answer those. And I, I believe most of the property owners are here and we can hear from them as well.
Yeah, let's go back to number one and I'll invite the property owner up. It's the property owner of 50 Logan in the audience. Not seeing any. Does the commission want to take action on these? Are they the line item or do you want to do it after we go through all fourteen?
Were you determined to be appropriate?
I thought we should take action on it as we're going. Is there any comments or what's your?
Since there was no contact or no change, I think we should retain it as the proceeding with the demolition list.
And if we give approval for demo tonight, when will bulldozers roll approximately?
It would be approximately a month and a half to two months. There's quite a few steps that we have to go since we are using federal money for a lot of this process. So we, any that you approve tonight for demolition, we can get started on fairly quickly, but there are a number of steps that we have to go through.
Number two, 426 Limit. Step up to the podium and identify yourself, please.
I'm Mario Munoz, owner of the property.
What's your plans with it?
We completed all, all that we had on the list. I'm ready to sell it and stop dealing with the city with this property.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Munoz, knowing that he came to us three quarters ago and said, here's my plan. We granted him the extension. He planned his work, he worked his plan, got a decent piece of property back on, on the rolls and possibly someone's going to live in it. Congratulations and thank you for doing that.
And I drove by and it, it does have some appeal to it now.
It'll start to look a lot better.
I just need to know when, when can I get some paper saying that it is off the list so I can get it moved?
I will get you something in writing tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
655 South Street is the owner here. Identify yourself, please.
Diane C. Bortone. I came down about six months ago, I don't know who she is over there, and asked if the city could tear the house down. I'm on a fixed income and I knew I didn't have any money to have it tore down. So I came down here to see if they would tear it down, if I could get a lien on it or something for four, five, 10 years. I really didn't care. But she said, yeah, well, it's a, a house that was two, two more sisters. The one sister and I have the most, whatever you want to call it, over the house. And she sent a letter saying it was fine to have it tore down. My other sister came down and I didn't even know she was coming, but I guess her income is too much. I get $1,052 every month from social security and then I work part-time for Easton School Bus, which is only through, I don't get paid until September. We start in August. I don't get paid until September, so I get paid September to May. So there's three months that I'm not getting paid. I have no way of paying to have the place tore down and that's why I came down here voluntarily to ask and I really don't know what else to do.
We'll take care of it.
We'll take care of it for you.
We'll get it torn down. But you do realize then you have a tax lien against that house. If in fact you sell that property at any time, transfer it, someone's going to have to pay the back taxes as well as the cost of the demo.
Oh, he's gone. Oh, I can't hear you, so he's going to translate to me.
Just so you know, that if we demo this and let's say it costs 5,000 demo, I have no idea what it's going to be. Whatever taxes you owe right now plus the cost of the demo will be on your taxes. There'll be a tax lien for that. So if you sell it, say you sell that property for $10,000, you may owe 5,000 in taxes. You only reap, you know, the first 5,000, you're going to pay your back taxes, which this will be part of.
Well, if I'm caught up on my text.
I'll explain to you. But I understand, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
776 Thornton. Not seeing anyone. What's commission's?
For the 655 South Street, we demo and for 776 Thornton Street, there's no owner here. I believe we just keep it on the demolition list.
Correct.
Yeah, there are no changes according to.
Okay. There's a consensus on that.
Yes.
113 Chestnut. Take her down?
No.
Take her down?
No contact from the owner.
Yep.
616 Spruce.
Maintain that on the demolition list as listed.
717 Olive. Identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Kevin List. I'm a, just a local contractor here in Leavenworth. Let me just say one thing that I did put a call in to Julie a couple of weeks ago, but I didn't get a response, which, so we just moved on a little bit. Did some stuff. I mean, that's not a, that's not a current picture of like the last couple of days.
Mr. List, this, this one is listed that no permit was pulled for this?
No, I'm, I, that is due to me because I'm a mechanical contractor. We usually do the work and then when you get inspected, they issue a permit.
Want to verify that?
I mean, that policy, you know, that's the policy, so I'm, I wasn't.
Are you saying that you normally do the work, then get the permit after you do the work?
Oh, yeah, when you call for an inspection, they issue a permit for electrical plumbing, furnace, air conditioner?
Furnace and air.
Because I have a bond with the city.
What all have you done to it, Kevin?
We fixed that garage in the back, they put a roof on it and put some siding on it. Over the weekend, I had, Brad Owens, a local contractor, he took care of a lot of it.
Where have you been for the last four, five months that we put this on the demo list? Back in June, I believe, did we not?
In July.
July, yeah. Nothing's happened except for a couple patchwork this week with no permit.
I wasn't aware of it, that it was on there three, four months ago.
Were certified letters sent out to all?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Could you confirm about the permit?
For the previous comments, Mr. List, yes, our office does allow electrical plumbing and mechanical contractors to do work and then call in for inspections and we issue the permits at that time. Typically, building permits do not work that way because they are not licensed contractors. We do, we do request that they call those before they start work.
Mr. List, you're not really a rookie in real estate, are you?
No, sir.
Not at all.
Oh, it's my fault, I dragged my feet.
Yeah. And if we, as Ms. Hurley said, if termination of the commission is to demo this, really you've got 45 days to do it because if something's fixed and the bulldozers are rolling, we would not tear down a house, a structure that was substantially complete. But based on nothing really having been done except for a couple patchwork things in the last couple of days, I'm in favor of continuing with the demo. But having said that, that means you've got a 45-day suspension period that you can probably get some work done. And that in itself would get it removed, but if by us granting you another 45 days, I'm afraid we might see you again.
I would, you know, I'll do anything that you people request, any repairs.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could, if you give the 45-day extension, there just has to be a 45-day extension. If you give the demo, there'll have to be a demo because how we do it, we can't pull them. We started doing sewer caps, utility disconnects. So it's either the demo or the 45 days.
Okay.
Would be my, would be my suggestion.
Well, I'm in favor to give them the additional 45 days with an automatic after that if it's not completed.
Has anything been done to the house itself, the house?
No.
Has anybody?
No, do you have a list? Do you have a list of any of the violations or whatever they want to repair?
I had 25 code violations.
On it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I need to find out about it.
Yeah, lots of stuff.
How long since anybody's lived in it?
Oh, it's been a couple of years.
So just that empty?
Yeah, yes.
Do you think you could have it back in shape in 45 days, Kevin?
Yes, I think so.
How, how long has it been since someone lived in it?
Couple of years.
Haven't had water for over six years. Have you had people in the last couple of years, no water?
Oh, no, I, I mean, I can't answer, I'm just guessing with you. Couple of years. Does it need, I didn't know it needed a requirement to be occupied.
No, it doesn't, but you're saying it was occupied in the last couple of years. According to our records, it hasn't had water since July of 2010. That's six years.
Okay, that was a guess.
I'd be okay with the 45-day extension.
No. Mr. List has been a long term, and there's another property out here that Mr. List owns. This home has been like this for a long, long time. It's, it's an 11th hour, last minute, let me save the property and overrule me, I'm good. But he, he's got the ability to do the miracle in 45 days, Mr. List. I know you can do it, but, but it's, it's just, it's an old song and dance, sir. I, that's been on the demolition list before.
With this property here?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Ms. Hurley has it on the demo.
This one has not. His other property, 800 Osage. The one on 800 Osage.
Right, I wanted to keep that section. I mean, I've never refused to do whatever you asked.
No, that's true. That, that, that's true. That's, you know, like I said, you've got the ability to do this, it's just that you don't. You choose not to until you're absolutely forced to. It's not, it's not a, a good way to do business together, so.
And that's your opinion?
You know, I, I just, you know, you're a good person, but you just let your properties go and it, this, it's always the last minute save. It's a long history, sir. It's a long history. And, and the sad thing is, you've got the ability to do it and these, there's just a handful of properties that you just let go. So it, it's hard to keep working and keep good faith when, you know, we're going to be hitting the 800 Osage, that's been on there too, on the demolition list before. It's, you know, I'm just sad.
Any of your crime?
I'm just, I'm just sad that the relationship is, is like this, you know? It's, it's a wonderful, you know, old historic house. I hate to see it torn down. I, I'm hoping I'm overruled by, you know, by giving you the 45 days. Given the 45 days. He, you, like I said, you, if anybody can create that miracle and get that where it's, you know, it'll meet all the things off the checkoff list, but my faith in you is having somebody owner occupy it, that it's a viable property, that may not happen.
Charlie?
Well, I'd like to work with any citizen on getting properties up to, to code and everything, but this has been on too long and to be honest, I'm not happy with how little has been done with it due to that alone. I'm in favor of leaving it on the demo.
Well, I guess I'm not sure what you're saying, how, it's been on there a long time?
I didn't say a long time, considering how long it's been, how little work has been done on it.
First put on the demo in July. Certified letters were sent out to all the owners, which you received, because I'm sure it's return receipt requested and probably got it. And nothing's been done. But, you know, to my previous question, Mr. List, you know, you're not a rookie in real estate. I mean, you, you probably have an inventory of quite a few properties in town. And I would suspect that might be your main business, I'm unsure, but I'm guessing it might be.
No.
It is not?
No.
But, you know, it's not. I, I would imagine if I owned a lot of properties, I'd do some drive-bys once a week or something just to make sure that no one stole on my property.
Yeah, summer's a pretty tough time, so I'm pretty busy and like eating air conditioning.
And winter is a very tough time doing building, building repairs. So we've got two main seasons of the year, we can't do anything.
Forty-five days is plenty of time to fix whatever is on that list I did not see.
And three months was, three and a half months since July is plenty of time too. I'm in favor of keeping it on the demo. That's three.
The, we grant them the 45 days was, as Julie suggested, off of the time that we grant them. How soon do you start to disconnect?
I'll probably make the calls this week.
Probably start it this week because those have to be done before we start the whole process.
Do you make the calls this week? When does the actual?
Just depends.
I mean, depends. Say again?
Depends on the utility company.
When they're able to get out there, a couple, within, within two weeks.
Yeah, I would say all of them are out there within two weeks.
Well, I hate to lose the house and I'm, I'm a believer in second chances, but I don't control the commission. I think there's two of us that'd like to see it stayed.
Julie, do you have a list of the other violations?
We do. Code enforcement staff put together a checklist for each of these properties of things that would need to be corrected, that Kathy Rogers has. One of the initial notices were sent out prior to the July meeting. We sent out notices to all the property owners, inviting them to come into our office and speak with us and work through the remediation agreements. So we do have a checklist of anything.
Well, I'm sure that I, I'm trying to say, I guess, that I don't, you know, what are, is there, there's not really no major deficiency uses property.
Anything that's, that's on the list to keep it off of, on the remediation agreement, to keep it off of the demolition list is limited to exterior property maintenance issues is what we're kind of limited to.
But I mean, I, you know, you look at the house and there's really not many issues with the house.
Well, you've got.
There, there is a lot of issues with that one.
You've got 45 days before it's going to come down. So if you can get her done, get down with Julie.
I'll go in there in the morning and talk to her. Get the list.
Yeah.
Like I said, I called a couple of weeks ago and I guess you were gone or something, but.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize for that. That be a comment?
It doesn't matter.
Tomorrow, speak with me or Kathy Rogers and we can.
Do you want to talk about this 800 while I'm here?
Well, I, I need a little bit of clarification. I had three to put it on the demo and start demo proceedings essentially tomorrow. We start environmental reviews, we start utility disconnects. This will all be included in all of our contracts. So if we do 45 days, then we won't do any of that on this property. We start incurring costs tomorrow, utility disconnects, and HUD does not like if you start incurring costs on properties and then you take it off. So that's why it's either it's on or it's 45 days.
Let me ask for consensus again. Is there consensus to keep the house for 45 days?
Yes.
Yes. No?
Mr. Mayor, I was before saying yes or no. I would like to hear about 800 Osage to kind of maybe give a little context to this whole discussion.
We can do that. Well, tell us about 800 Osage.
They, most of the repairs have been done. It's like, you know, 85% done. They put new rafters and new roofing. It just needs to be shingled on there. So they fixed, all that's been fixed in the last week or two. Right, Brad Owens, a contractor, he's been working on it.
Is that the old carriage house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just got a building permit today, is that correct?
Well, like I said, I'm not familiar with that policy of drawing a permit till, like you said, you get inspected because in the field, you know, the, we don't pull a permit until we get the electrical or whatever ready to inspect. That's, you know, that's been the policy forever. I think Hal can verify that.
How long before that one will be completed?
They said this week. I mean, they were over there. See, I don't know if you've got any pictures of today?
This picture, these two pictures are today, this afternoon.
Yeah, I haven't been by it, but they, all the new rafters and all that stuff is on there, there's new black paper on there, so it's down to shingling on one side.
Ms. Hurley, was this put on the demo list four, five years ago?
Yes, it was.
And did we get a remediation agreement then?
I don't believe so.
But we did give an extension because we heard a plaintiff plea by, or a plaintiff plea by the. But we did give an extension because we heard a plaintiff plead by, or a plaintiff plead by the owner that that would be fixed, then we took it off the demo list, is that correct?
That's correct, the commission removed it.
And was anything done afterward removed from the demo list?
Not to my knowledge.
Nothing, okay.
All the repairs were made that they asked for.
No.
Six years from, when it was on the demo was six years ago?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Then how could it get to this state in six years?
Yeah, all the repairs were made that they requested last time. They painted, did all that, whatever they wanted. I can't remember exactly what it was, but.
I respectfully disagree, and.
Why would you disagree?
And the problem, the roof, that just doesn't happen in six years.
Not a six-year-old roof.
Okay, and the problem with this is, this was a commercial building that was, its use was grandfathered, and it's long lost that. So, there's no viability as that as a commercial building. Your only alternative is to turn it into a residence. You don't do that. It's probably used for storage, because there's a lot of junk in there. And granted, the code only requires you to do the outside upkeep, but this is not a viable property, and that's got way more damage.
Yeah, it's a storage building, yeah.
Yeah, that's, and which I disagree, because that does nothing for the neighborhood or anything like that, but.
It doesn't disturb the neighbors.
If I was a neighbor, it disturbed me.
You know.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, like I said, if you, they took pictures today, like I said, it's got all the rafters on the one side, all the sheeting, and they got black paper, so it's, you know, 80, you know, 80, 85% fixed it.
And that's why also, it, there's not been that good faith estimate to keep the properties up, maintain it, Mr. List. That's really why I just have to keep.
Well, when we have a problem like this, we fix it, and it's, you know, I'm just pretty busy, but, you know, we get to 11 hours.
When was the last time that was used for any type of?
Oh, no, we've been using, we use it for storage for a year, for air conditioning stuff and what have you.
And that's not exactly, is that a permitted use in the residential area to use a property for storage?
Well, if I had a house, I could store stuff in it, right? I mean, I think you're going somewhere off the trail there.
When's the last time it's had utilities?
It's had utilities long, you know, I don't need any utilities in it. We had a meter got tore off a long time ago, but it was repaired, never turned it back on, but.
So, you don't have any power?
Oh, yeah, I have power to it.
You got water?
No, don't need water. I don't need any water. Like I said, we store air conditioning stuff in there, furnaces in there and stuff.
Yeah, you know, you don't get that number.
I mean, it was a commercial property, it was a commercial property, but you changed Mrs. Weekly? It was a commercial property, and you're kind of changing it in your own mind to a residential? And the structure isn't changed, it's still an old store. It was a 100-year-old grocery store.
It was, and in one.
So, how can you say that, how would you say that all of a sudden, oh, it's going to be, it's a residence now?
It's, that's the only alternative to make it a viable, usable property. Cannot be a commercial property for you anymore. It lost its grandfather clause to do that.
How did it lose that?
As it's, as being a commercial building in a residential area.
But how did it lose it? Nothing changed?
Because it's, it has, there hasn't been a business there occupied or anything done with it, so the only.
I mean, is there an ordinance that states that?
No.
Yeah, it's a nonconforming use, and if you change use or you change owner, then that's when the grandfather clause.
Yeah, we haven't, you know, we haven't changed owner. I don't know how long, I've had it a long time.
You couldn't open it as a commercial building now, because it hasn't been a commercial building.
You don't have an ordinance for that, you're just making that statement? No, I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the whole thing of a nonconforming use. A nonconforming use can stay in business while it's continuous use or continuous ownership. Should those things change, then it loses its ability to be nonconforming.
If the use has discontinued, then it loses that nonconformity.
As a prior owner of a nonconforming use property, I'm well acquainted with what can and can't be done. This lost that ability to do that. You've just used it as, as a storage facility.
Well, for my business.
Yeah, as a storage facility.
Commercial.
And haven't kept it up. It's been an eyesore in that neighborhood forever. Like I said, there's, there's no good faith relationship in you maintaining your properties to, for me to give you an extension of 45 days to do anything else with that.
Well, like I said, it's all the rafters, they put all the rafters and all the roofing on a whole other side, on that side that was bad, and it's like, you know, it's down to shingles, so what, what is putting shingles on? 20% of the project could be done by the end of the week.
We've got 25 code violations on here, so I don't know what.
Is that right? Okay, well, I'm sorry, I have to go.
Have you paid your taxes on, Mr. List?
Yeah, yes, sir.
This says, this says $1,377 are due.
That's a year or two, probably two years.
So, have they been paid or not?
No, not.
Oh, they haven't. You said they had been.
Yeah, we, I paid them all up two years ago, I think.
Okay, let's go back to 717. Olive, be your vote.
I'm in.
You vote nonextension?
No. No extension.
No extension.
Okay, so it's a demo? That was a three to two on the consensus?
Yes.
No, no consensus was made, there's no vote on consensus.
There was no consensus.
Well, yeah, we, three to two to take it down.
Correct.
Okay, what about Olive?
Ottawa.
Or Ottawa, I mean.
Do you want to go back to Osage?
I mean, Osage, yeah, yeah, sorry.
800 Osage.
Yeah, 800 Osage, I'm getting confused.
There you go.
Okay, what do you want to do on this?
All right, I want to keep it on the demolition list.
Nancy?
I'd be okay with that on this one, and I've seen that over the years, it hasn't changed any, probably 20 years.
Charlie?
Demo.
Mark?
None, it's on the list, keep it.
It's a demo. 717 Olive, or Ottawa, I'm sorry. State your name, please.
I'm sorry? My name's Scott Cross.
Okay, there's been no change or anything on this?
Well, then the windows boarded, I think, Julie said.
I did board it up, and I wasn't aware of the process of this at all, but I would get the list of things that need to be done and start doing it.
You signed a remediation agreement September 15th.
I did.
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Has this been on the demo list before?
I don't believe so, no.
Scott Cross, you were notified in July on this, you haven't done anything since then?
I wasn't aware of that, Scott Cross was supposed to, I was told that I would be able to come for tonight. State why, I wasn't told that I hadn't until now to do anything.
You can tell us why you haven't done anything, but that's not going to cure the problem.
What have you done with this house? How long have you owned it?
About five years ago.
When's the last time you paid taxes on it?
Last year.
According to this, you have $3,000 in taxes.
That's behind, but last year I had to pay the, something.
You have any utilities? What do you think it costs to bring that thing up to somewhat livable?
$2,000.
Not a builder, but 2,000, doesn't, doesn't look to me as if that would complete it, but once again, I'm not agreed. Why haven't you done anything for five, six years?
I'm sorry?
Why haven't you done anything with it? With the years that you've owned it and way, late taxes?
I was using it for storage at the time, but.
Neighbors loved it?
I haven't had any, they say anything to me, but I don't know. I mean, I'll fix it, you know, give me a chance. I haven't had any chances at all.
When did you, when did you say that you were notified? When did you first learn that you were trouble?
I didn't know that my chance started then. I thought it started tonight.
What, do we have copies of the, what did the letter say that we sent out in July? We actually sent one out before July.
We do.
Sent one out like in April or May, saying it's going to be on the July meeting to put it on the demo list.
Right, we sent out a letter in the spring, I'm not sure of the exact date, an informal letter, like I said before, inviting the owners to come in and work with us to go over a list of items that need to be taken care of prior to the meeting in July. Then property owners were sent another notification when that meeting in July was scheduled. And then after that meeting, when this date was set, then we had all the official notification with the certified letters, and we actually stapled a, the notice to the property, so they're notified in multiple ways.
If you were given some additional time, and that's, that's just a big if right now, do you have the money to go in and do the repairs?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, one of the processes that we've implemented this year as part of adopting the Kansas statutes is that we require prop owners, when they sign a remediation agreement, to show financial means to take care of these issues. The other property owners that have signed remediation agreements have provided that to us, showing, you know, some sort of bank statement or what have you, showing that they have the funds to take care of the problems.
So, if this ran $3,000 or $4,000 to complete all the code violations on it, do you have that money available?
I mean, I don't have all that available, but I could still earn money.
My concern is, he doesn't even know at this point in time what those code violations are. There's no plan. I mean, there's some significant damage and deterioration to this house. Have you even, do you maintain the yard even to that? Has this been on for lawn mowing or anything like that, too? I mean, there's, there's significant work that needs to be done with this. You know, and you've been letting it sit and deteriorate like this for years. I mean, this is not a little bit of damage, sir, so I.
Nancy, do you have any comments? Charlie?
I don't have any direct comment. I just, knowing my past experience working, you know, before, there's no way you're convinced me there's only $2,000 or $3,000 there that needs to be repaired. I see it going a lot higher than that.
I don't know, I have no idea.
Mark, do you have any?
No, I think this property owner's been notified multiple times. We've had their chance to bring their case to us, to bring it at the 11th hour. I say remains as is on the demo list.
Everybody else gets a signed remediation agreement, I can't get shot at.
Who has signed a remediation agreement tonight?
It sounds like all these other people that have had.
And they came in when they were notified back in April and July?
All I can say is my mother in the ship's side, you know, I don't, she's told me that this meeting is tonight. She's gotten all that, and she, I haven't read it, I haven't seen it.
How much time would it take you to get, get this thing going?
I'm not positive, but I can guarantee my taxman, it comes in in April, I'll.
No, it's not going to.
What, just a few months? You want to just rip my property away from me just for a few months, if, maybe, maybe I could go in and you won't? Well, I wouldn't do it to you.
If my house looked like this, I'd hope they'd do it to me.
Would you?
If my property looked like this, yes, I don't think they would take it from me.
Are you a resident of Level 1?
Yes.
So, we don't take the property away from you, we just remove the house.
I understand.
Okay, demo?
Demo.
What is your plan for the house? I mean, what do you plan to do with it?
I would pick it up and either rent it or sell it.
I don't know why you haven't sold it before. I don't understand why you want to keep houses you can't fix.
Okay, move on to 856 Cherokee.
I'm sorry.
State your name, please.
Peggy Hyde. I'm here for Tom Hyde. He's out of town right now.
Okay, this has, this has, both of these properties have some work that started on it but not complete.
I have a list, he gave me a list of stuff that he done on both sides.
These are current pictures?
Those are from April, we get to, that's from last week, here's from today, you can tell from last week, they've been doing some more work at the, some sheeting over the porch. I know that the work has been ongoing, and like I said, the permits have been pulled, and they have been working on it over the past month or so. I'm not sure of the date that the permit was, but they have been working on it.
Permits have been pulled on both properties?
Yes, they have.
And there has been some work?
Yes, they've been working on that.
And ma'am, do you have like an update of all of what's been done and what still needs to be done?
I think do, yes.
Okay.
May I bring it up? Are you on the, it's rated?
Yeah, she can just.
Okay.
Hand it to the clerk.
Thank you.
And you say you need 60 days to complete?
That's what he's asking for.
That's what, that's what, that's on the note. Okay, I'm just going to let the note go down the line, thank you.
I can see 45 days.
Yeah.
I see that we signed, you signed or the property owner signed a remediation agreement on June 6th, saying that by October 6th, they have a myriad things, myriad things done. According to Ms. Hurley, these are not done, is that correct?
I don't handle this personally.
Yeah, they're not, they're not all complete, they're, they're in process.
But they're in process?
They're in process, yeah.
What percent would you say?
I would say maybe 50% there, and it looks like they did sign a condemnation waiver when they pulled the building permit on September 15th, just stating that they understand that it's on the demolition list, and that them pulling the permit and beginning work would not necessarily mean that it would be removed from the demolition list. So, since they pulled that permit in mid-September, they've, they've completed a fair amount of what they've been tasked with.
But they do have a legitimate work ability to make on both properties?
They do.
Okay, I feel because at least there's been a good faith effort and some.
I agree.
I agree.
Substantial progress on that. I'd be willing to give the 45-day extension on each property.
I agree.
I agree.
Eight, that's the most properties you're going to do.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold those two together.
1107 North 10th. Not seeing anyone.
This is one that was deceased.
So, does anybody?
We have no change, no contact. Demo? Yes. 1158 Kenton.
This is to remove it.
Brandon Bateman.
Yeah.
We purchased this property just a few weeks before. It was put on the demolition list, but hopefully we.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero.
So staff will keep working with the owner of the Cherokee properties, and then we'll bring those back before you in 45 days for an update, and to consider again what to do with those.
Okay.
Need to open a public hearing for a fire damaged structure at 1029 Iron Molars?
So move.
Seconded.
Begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 We pass this five to zero. We are in a public hearing.
Staff report will be from Mike McDonald, Public Works Director.
This is a slightly different angle from the previous public hearing, in that this is, there is ordinance that allows the city to collect proceeds from insurance of structures that are damaged by fire. This is recently expanded, including, I think, earthquakes and other hazards. In particular, this property at 1029 Iron Molars was damaged by fire in June of this year. The property owner has obtained a permit, has been making progress toward completing the repairs of the property. The administration of this program is through the chief building official, or chief building inspector, I guess, of Hal Verdet, who's been in contact with the property owners, in that the city retains, I think it's 15% of the cost of insurance proceeds until such time as the structure meets city standards, and the plan is then returned. Recent tours of the property are that while progress is being made, there is not sufficiently completed, that staff is willing to recommend return of the additional funding. If the city commission, what's that, Paul's report? Basically need to determine whether or not to set a date to have a final hearing for occupants here of demolition of the structure, and that's why we're here today.
Is the owner?
Over here. I don't believe so, no.
How, how far on a percentage basis is he redone?
Well, they're coming along well. They've, they've gone further than the extent of the damage of the fire. They've re, restored, reconstructed the entire roof structure. The exterior is, first coat of stucco is put back on it. There has been some electrical, mechanical, and plumbing work done on the interior. As Mike was saying, we typically hold those funds until the exterior is completed, and the interior is ready for sheet rock. I have all, I have confidence that that's going to happen, it just hasn't happened yet.
Did they request for the funds to be returned?
Not yet. I, I've spoken with the owner and the contractor, and they understand at what point the city usually releases those funds, and they're, they're working to get to that point.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't some of the funds that was holding them up.
I haven't, I haven't heard that yet, sir.
So if, if the outside siding goes on, you think you're ready then to release the funds?
Well, like I say, we typically try and wait until we see all the, I mean, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing be ready inside, because then it's sheet rock and finish from there. So that's typically when we release it, exterior and the interior to that point. And they just started the stucco, that last week when I visited the site, and even put the basic coat of stucco on, but they do have that on now, so...
Okay, okay. Okay, and they're not needing these funds to complete those repairs? You don't think so?
No, they haven't expressed that to me yet.
All right.
I think it would be appropriate to, you know, select a date to re-review this, in 60 or 90 days or some appropriate time period, I think. Discussing with Hal, they're, they're moving ahead.
Why don't we go 90 days unless they approach you where there's a dire need for the money?
I understand.
Or they release part of it or something, we can move that date forward.
And, and just so we're clear, if they get to the point where we typically release it before those 90 days, then we won't need to come back.
Right.
Okay. All right, yeah, because I'm, I was in a little, I'm a little unclear of what you were asking action, that you were asking from us, sir. Just, yeah.
Right. I apologize.
My question is, why is this even being brought to us? We have a procedure in place that we don't release the funds until it is substantially completed. There is no request from the property owner. Why would we even consider doing something outside of our SOP?
Because we set a public hearing date.
This is, public hearing is part of our procedure.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're still holding on to the funds?
Yes.
It looks like they're on track, and they could be a couple of weeks out, and you say it's ready for sheet rock, and then we cut them a check for 15, 450.
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, Sam, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this? If not, a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, Mr. Priceinger?
Aye.
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 Five to zero. Consider Resolution B 2149 for demolish or repair fire damaged structure. And that is a motion?
So move.
Second.
Well, you want your motion to be...
Wait a minute, yeah.
What do we need here?
You want your motion to be to approve the resolution for a 90-day extension?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider granting a 90-day resolution for Resolution, 90-day extension for Resolution B 2149.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero.
Well, you want your motion to be...
Wait a minute, yeah.
What do we need here?
You want your motion to be to approve the resolution for a 90-day extension?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider granting a 90-day resolution for Resolution, 90-day extension for Resolution B 2149.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Item number nine is a retaining wall at 3713 Lakeview, built on public property.
Mike McDonald will start this one off.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, this is an improvement made by the property owners and the contractor at 3713 Lakeview. The property owners have been notified that this meeting is occurring this evening. I do not know if they're here this evening or not. I have not interacted with them.
They are.
Okay. This wall, the landscaping that you see in the pictures here was constructed without benefit of a permit or a site plan. And in essence, what has happened is the retaining wall that you see here was constructed about 10 foot into the city's property line. There's a water meter in this area right here. That is approximately the property line. So the property owners have basically occupied the public right-of-way with a retaining wall and landscaping that is, would not have been approved if they had applied for a permit for this project. We did not know about it until it was essentially complete, and we contacted the property owners and explained the situation to them. And as to be expected, it is a nice landscaping project. They, they're interested in keeping it as it is. The, the problem with these types of improvements on public property, as attractive as it might be, is that this is property that is used by others. It is, it is a franchise agreement with our utility companies that they have access to public right-of-way and to install their systems. And things that are built, they have to deal with either repair, replace, remove, deal with obstructions that would not normally be expected to have been constructed. And many times over the years, we've asked city commission's approval to construct footings for retaining walls and that sort of thing. And we've always got the utility companies involved before things were constructed, rather than, rather than after. The general public accesses this property as part of the transportation system. It's a public street. It is public property for approximately 13 feet behind the back of the curb line. People can walk there. People can avoid getting run over by cars. If they're walking down the street, they can stand in that area. And if there was a need in the future for sidewalks, this is the area that they would be built. And at this point, there is a retaining wall, a landscaping project in the way of that. These types of obstructions cost money to deal with. We contacted the utility companies if they had any fundamental issue with this project, specifically at this location. And most of them said that they believe that their current projects, looking out ahead, they didn't see it was a problem. But Kansas guess did say, they sure liked to not have to be responsible for any damages to that wall if they have to go work on gas lines, because it's not where the wall is normally be. And on city projects, we work around things like this that had, that have appeared over the years, way back, I mean, the 10s are, are decades back. You have walls, landscaping, steep driveways, all kinds of things that impact our projects. Usually, we try to, if we're doing something like building a sidewalk, building a sewer, improving a street, the city commission has almost always worked to basically accommodate the people that have built these things, often not the people that are living there now, but we pay money for damages for stuff that's built on our property. And in this case, that's a, that's a fairly substantial obstacle if it were to be, having to be dealt with for a public project, could be 10, 20, 30 years from now, and none of, none of us here would remember this discussion. It's interesting to think of this retaining walls if it was a fence. If it was a fence, we would say that's not allowed, and you'd simply need to take it down and put it back on your property line. It's not that different. As I noted, we directed the property owners to contact utility companies. We did as well. Someday, there'll be somebody wanting to put a power pole or an underground something through there that this wall will be in their way. Someday, there may need to be a sidewalk. If you look at the street, the general expectation is that there might be a sidewalk. If you put a sidewalk on one side, it would most likely be on the other side, but that isn't always the case. Sometimes we have reasons to build sidewalks on the more difficult side of the street, which would, which would be this side. Another issue that has surfaced, there still is no permit for this project that's been issued, is the stairways do not meet city's building code primarily with, there's, there's no handrail on the portions where there's no landing, the lower, the lower portion and the upper portion. These require handrails. If there was been a permit, we would have identified that these needed handrails. I don't know if there's a rise issue with this. Does checked out. Okay, so it's, there's a need for handrails if it were to remain to meet our codes. The, kind of some options, it's a really frustrating circumstances for both staff and property owners, because they have a very nice improvement here. Yet we deal with very nice improvements built properly in the past. This whole neighborhood, I don't have my picture here, but every house on that side of the street has a very similar yard. Someone, every one of them may say, gosh, if it worked for one, it could work for me too. I could use more flat space in my front yard. I'd sure like to build that wall. So it may just be, if there's, if there's one person, there may be more. We would recommend that the city commission provide a timeframe for removal of this obstruction on public property, and that it not be permitted to remain.
How high does a wall have to be to build before you need a permit?
Out of the ground, about three feet.
What's the height of that one?
About that.
So really, the permit's not the issue?
The permit would have said, the wall needs to be on your property line. It cannot be, if you have a site plan that says, I want to build this three-foot-tall wall, three foot behind the curb, we would have said that's not allowed.
Okay. In all reasonable thought, I've driven the neighborhood, and I believe everybody is familiar with the two. If there was a sidewalk going in on that street, it's definitely going to be on the opposite side, because I would never put one on the side of the hills on, because you'd be building retaining walls there. Did it have, I don't think it had a sidewalk prior to the construction of the wall.
No, sir.
Okay, it does have a walking path, to be somewhere around three feet. I could be wrong on it, it's just a guess.
About three feet.
And as far as the utilities, from what I'm reading on them, none of them really, really minded, they just didn't want the liability if they had to go in it. My suggestion is, is to leave it. They have sizable amount of money into that project, but if the city, for some reason or another, needs that land, or if a utility has to go through it, they go through it with no cost remuneration.
And how is that record kept, sir? That's the problem. It could be 20 or 30 years from now.
Well, I won't be here, so I won't worry about it.
We're dealing with a wall from 20 or 30 years ago today, so that's, that's the...
You could flag something on the address.
I, you know...
I have a question, too.
I don't know. To me, these are the most heart-wrenching things to deal with, you know, and because it, it looks like, it looks like a beautiful project. The problem, the main problem is, it's, it's the precedent that we keep dealing with. And, and I've been sitting on this commission a while, and I've had to, you know, inherit some problems. I really don't want to pass that on to my future commissions on that. You know, because we all sit back and wonder just, what was happening back then? How did it get to this point on that? My main fault with this is, it was done without a permit by a reputable, experienced landscaper here that, that should have known better, that, that any time you do something on a property, that they would have need to do a permit. It's, it's in our right of way, and, and yeah, today, and probably not, you know, hopefully for a long time, you're not going to have to dig it up. The utilities, like currently, don't have an issue with it, but like I said, it does present a problem, you know, for the future. And it may not be this homeowner, it's going to be some unsuspecting future homeowner that thinks that that would, that was probably done, and that it was okay. And we've dealt with stuff like that all the time.
I just wondered, and I, I think we ought to hear from the owner.
Yeah.
I just wondered, the landscaping company, don't they know better?
Yeah, they should.
My name's Pam Henderson. I'm the owner of the property. If you look at my driveway, you'll see I have about a 40 or 45% grade. I'm the only property owner in that entire three-block area, all the way up to, to Muncie Road that has that grade. So my, so when you parked alongside of the road, and you opened your door, you opened your door into mud, or grass, or whatever, that's why we put the wall there. We chose not to put a sidewalk there, because there are no sidewalks in our area at all, okay? There are two other structures on my block, not my immediate block, but between Hughes Road, McDonald Road, I'm sorry, and Muncie Road, that are next to the curb. Two other homes that have those structures. Not, not significant, well, one is significant like mine, one is not, okay? But they go to the curb.
When I drove by, I don't recall it on your block.
Well, they're on down. Dr. Heller's property up the hill. If you have to look, because his wall's face away from the street. And, you know, so next to my property is a, is a long wooded area going...
Complete and we contacted the property owners and explained the situation to them. And as to be expected, it is a nice landscaping project. They're interested in keeping it as it is. The problem with these types of improvements on public property, as attractive as it might be, is that this is property that is used by others. It is a franchise agreement with our utility companies that they have access to public right-of-way and to install their systems. And things that are built, they have to deal with either repair, replace, remove, deal with obstructions that would not normally be expected to have been constructed. And many times over the years, we've asked the city commission's approval to construct footings for retaining walls and that sort of thing. And we've always got the utility companies involved before things were constructed rather than after. The general public accesses this property as part of the transportation system. It's a public street. It is public property for approximately 13 feet behind the back of the curb line. People can walk there. People can avoid getting run over by cars. If they're walking down the street, they can stand in that area. And if there was a need in the future for sidewalks, this is the area that they would be built. And at this point, there is a retaining wall landscaping project in the way of that. These types of obstructions cost money to deal with. We contacted the utility companies if they had any fundamental issue with this project, specifically at this location. And most of them said that they believe that their current projects, looking out ahead, they didn't see it was a problem. But Kansas guess did say, they sure like to not have to be responsible for any damages to that wall if they have to go work on gas lines, because it's not where the wall will normally be. And on city projects, we work around things like this that had, that have appeared over the years, way back, I mean, the tens or decades back. You have walls, landscaping, steep driveways, all kinds of things that impact our projects. Usually, we try to, if we're doing something like building a sidewalk, building a sewer, improving a street, the city commission has almost always worked to basically accommodate the people that have built these things, often not the people that are living there now, but we pay money for damages for stuff that's built on our property. And in this case, that's a fairly substantial obstacle if it were to be, having to be dealt with for a public project could be 10, 20, 30 years from now. And none of us here would remember this discussion. It's interesting to think of this retaining walls if it was a fence. If it was a fence, we would say, that's not allowed and you'd simply need to take it down and put it back on your property line. It's not that different. As I noted, we directed the property owners to contact utility companies. We did as well. Someday, there'll be somebody wanting to put a power pole or an underground something through there that this wall will be in their way. Someday, there may need to be a sidewalk. If you look at the street, the general expectation is that there might be a sidewalk. If you put a sidewalk on one side, it would most likely be on the other side. But that isn't always the case. Sometimes we have reasons to build sidewalks on the more difficult side of the street, which would be this side. Another issue that has surfaced, there still is no permit for this project that's been issued, is the stairways do not meet city's building code primarily with, there's no handrail on the portions where there's no landing, the lower portion and the upper portion. These require handrails. If there was been a permit, we would have identified that these needed handrails. I don't know if there's a rise issue with this that does check out. So there's a need for handrails if it were to remain to meet our codes. The, some options, it's a really frustrating circumstances for both staff and property owners, because they have a very nice improvement here. Yeah, we deal with very nice improvements built properly in the past. This whole neighborhood, I don't have my picture here, but every house on that side of the street has a very similar yard. Someone, every one of them may say, gosh, if it worked for one, it could work for me too. I could use more flat space in my front yard. I'd sure like to build that wall. So it may just be, if there's one person, there may be more. We would recommend that the city commission provide a timeframe for removal of this obstruction on public property and that it not be permitted to remain.
How high does a wall have to be to build before you need a permit?
Out of the ground, about three feet.
What's the height of that one?
About that.
So really, the permits not the issue?
The permit would have said, the wall needs to be on your property line. It cannot be, if you have a site plan that says, I want to build this three-foot-tall wall, three foot behind the curb, we would say that's not allowed.
In all reasonable thought, I've driven the neighborhood and I believe everybody is familiar with it too. If there was a sidewalk going in on that street, it's definitely going to be on the opposite side, because I would never put one on the side of the hills on, because you'd be building retaining walls there. Did it have, I don't think it had a sidewalk prior to the construction of the wall.
No, sir.
Okay, it does have a walking path, to be somewhere around three feet. I could be wrong on it, it's just a guess.
About three feet.
And as far as the utilities, from what I'm reading on them, none of them really minded, they just didn't want the liability if they had to go in it. My suggestion is, is to leave it. They have sizable amount of money into that project. But if the city, for some reason or another, needs that land, or if a utility has to go through it, they go through it with no cost remuneration.
And how is that record kept, sir? That's the problem. It could be 20 or 30 years from now.
Well, I won't be here, so I won't worry about it.
We're dealing with a wall from 20 or 30 years ago today. So that's the...
You could flag something on the address.
I, you know...
I have a question too.
I don't know. To me, these are the most heart-wrenching things to deal with, you know? And because it looks like, it looks like a beautiful project. The problem, the main problem is, it's the precedent that we keep dealing with. And I've been sitting on this commission a while and I've had to, you know, inherit some problems. I really don't want to pass that on to my future commissions on that. You know, because we all sit back and wonder just, what was happening back then? How did it get to this point on that? My main fault with this is, it was done without a permit by a reputable, experienced landscaper here that should have known better, that any time you do something on a property, that they would have need to do a permit. It's in our right-of-way and yeah, today, and probably not, you know, hopefully for a long time, you're not going to have to dig it up. The utilities, like currently, don't have an issue with it. But like I said, it does present a problem, you know, for the future. And it may not be this homeowner, it's going to be some unsuspecting future homeowner that thinks that that was probably done and that it was okay. And we've dealt with stuff like that all the time.
I just wondered, and I think we ought to hear from the owner.
Yeah.
I just wondered, the landscaping company, don't they know better?
Yeah. They should.
My name's Pam Henderson, I'm the owner of the property. If you look at my driveway, you'll see I have about a 40 or 45 percent grade. I'm the only property owner in that entire three-block area, all the way up to Muncie Road that has that grade. So my, so when you parked alongside of the road and you opened your door, you opened your door into mud or grass or whatever, that's why we put the wall there. We chose not to put a sidewalk there, because there are no sidewalks in our area at all. Okay? There are two other structures on my block, not my immediate block, but between Hughes Road, McDonald Road, I'm sorry, and Muncie Road, that are next to the curb. Two other homes that have those structures. Not significant, well, one is significant like mine, one is not. Okay? But they go to the curb.
When I drove by, I don't recall it on your board.
They're on down. Dr. Heller's property up the hill. You have to look, because his wall's face away from the street. And, you know, so next to my property is a long wooded area going south. Two properties south of that, they have a wall, nicely landscaped area with brush and everything, and it goes to the wall, it goes to the curb. So the whole purpose of doing this wall was to make it so that I can open, my company can open their door and walk, not go into mud, and then they can walk up my stairs. I had no stairs to begin with. So in a normal house, we have two cars, we park them on the driveway, somebody had to walk in and around the cars to go across my sidewalk. So that's why we put the stairs there.
And did you, were you aware that it needed a permit and go through a plan, a site plan with the city?
You know, I'm the homeowner, I have, I hired reputable people and Sean's not here today. He is at someplace, in Overland Park, doing something and couldn't be here. I asked him, do we need a permit? He talked to somebody, I can't tell you what, so let me back up. I can't tell you what he said and what he knew. I can't tell you that.
You were, basically, you were relying on him to provide you that expertise?
When I started my home remodel and my two landscape things, I said to my contractor and my landscape guy, I want to do everything so that when I sell my house in 20 years, I don't have a problem with the city. So they knew, you know, if, I can't tell you if he knew. I didn't know you needed permits to do landscaping. I mean, when I put flowers in my yard, do I need to come and get a permit?
If it's in the right-of-way.
Okay. Another point, another point, please let me make, that wall is 19 feet back from the center of the street. It's my understanding that the normal standard right-of-way in the city is 20 feet. In my neighborhood, it's 30 feet. I could be wrong, but that's what I've been told. That wall is at 19 feet back. It was only put there to make it easier for my company to park on the side of the street.
And apparently, by, like our public works director shaking his head, it's not the code. It's, you know...
Well, obviously, if it was a code, we wouldn't be here. Right. I am perfectly willing to accept the responsibility that if the gas company or the water company need to come in and tear my wall down at a reasonable size, not tear my whole wall down because the city's mad at me, but, you know, I am perfectly willing to accept that responsibility of repairing that wall, the wall. I'm perfectly willing to accept that responsibility. You know, my, I have a picture of what my yard looked like before. I don't know if any of you all had been in my neighborhood before, but my yard was basically crabgrass and dirt. I have two great big trees there. It's hard to grow grass under those trees if you don't sod. I have done nothing but improve this. The other yards to the north of me, going towards McDonald Road, do not have the grade I have, but they do have grades. So if the city comes in and puts a sidewalk in, if you put a sidewalk on my side of the street in my yard, the city put a sidewalk there, you'd have to have a six-foot retaining wall. And I would no longer be able to get on my driveway, because it would go like this and then it would go like this.
No, I, like I said, it's, that's what's so heart-wrenching about this. It's a beautiful project, it's just not a legal project. And that, so, and if you did pull it back, you're looking at a higher retaining wall.
Thirty, 30 feet. Thirty feet from the center of the road goes three feet in front of my planters. Half of my yard, you all are telling me belongs to the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Not just five feet for a sidewalk or eight feet for a sidewalk in a grassy area. You're telling me that half of my yard belongs to the city.
I think that's what the public works director is saying, ma'am, that is, Mr. McDonald...
At the end of the process, that's correct. The street right-of-way in the southern two-thirds of the community is generally 60 feet wide. Generally, the street's in the middle of the right-of-way, so you can go, get an idea where you need to be, you can come 30 foot off the center of the street and we'll find the water meter, we'll find where your power poles are. Normally, the houses are a 25-foot setback from that point. So you would have 25 feet from the front of the house to the edge of your property line and then perhaps another 13 or 15 feet to the curb line. So if there's a 25-foot setback, we're not half the yard, but you are responsible for maintaining the green space, pulling the grass out to the curb, even though it's city property.
I, we've got a picture, Ms. Henderson, of your property before, and you could understand the situation. And what is built there is beautiful. It does present some problems. I, like the mayor, like the idea of, can we do something to hold this? But then the other question is, or if the neighbors to the north and the south says, hey, let's, can we all do this? And if they come, if they do it without permit, hopefully we'd catch them, you know, we'd figure that out before. But if they come and ask for permit, we probably would not grant one, would we?
No. The wall would have to be built basically on the property line at some point.
And what, I don't know, I don't know if Mr. Dawson can answer that. If someone did come in and ask for a permit and we deny it, can they come back to us and say, wait a minute, he allowed it here?
No, but it would be other issues, as you know, complaints. I know legally, they would not be able to get to them.
This is probably one of the toughest ones I've had in a few years.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
For compromising situations, if this was a smaller project that was in the right-of-way, I would have no problem saying, remove it, just like you would a fence. There's a lot of things that have gone into this. And what the reports from the utilities saying that the only problem they have is any future damage to the wall, and they don't want to be liable for it, neither does the city. I don't want to encourage anyone in the future to do this at all, but what I'm looking at now, I tend to want to agree with the mayor, that if there was a way that we can make sure that it's, if anything, is run cost on the wall, the old owner's responsible for it, not the city, not the utility. I could see something like that. Yeah, that's the one thing I can see as far as any type of compromise with it.
What if, either Mr. Dawson or anyone came in, two cars come along, one, you know, piece of soccer ball, or cars coming, cheating over his or her side, and they veer to the right or left, whatever the case may be, they run into that wall, and somebody gets hurt in the car. Can an attorney, or can someone say, yeah, that's city right-of-way, I want to sue the city, oh, I'll sue the homeowner and the city because of that. Are we potentially liable?
Yeah, we're potentially liable. The problem you mentioned earlier, if somebody comes in and asks for a permit, they'd be denied. But if somebody just builds another wall, and then we say, no, you got to take your wall down, it ain't a legal offense to that.
So the thing, I won't get into that.
I really think the landscaper should be held liable for this.
But I feel from Ms. Henderson, it's...
I do too, but what it would take to have him fix it, he should be responsible for fixing it.
The wall can't be moved back any further. Not to the edge of my property. We're talking about moving that wall five feet back, or 10 feet back, so the wall would have to be 10 feet tall. Or eight feet tall, way taller than it is here. If I, if the wall has to come down, then it won't be replaced.
Okay, doesn't look like that much of a grade, I didn't remember.
It's the angle.
I know Ms. Keen's not here, I think it's Mr. Keen, but I saw Mr. Went raising his hand. Are you involved in this project, Mr. Went? And if you are, you can come up to the mic. And not if you are, if you want to speak, I'm sorry.
Don't want to put him on the spot.
Yeah.
Kevin Went. Pam had hired me to do a room addition on the back of her home about this time last year. And then just freshening up the whole inside of her house, new floors, paint, you know, repair drywall and stuff like that. I wasn't involved in any of the landscaping, other than excavation of what we did in the back. It was my understanding that if the wall was over four feet tall, because she has some retaining walls in the back, because her backyard is equally as steep, if the walls were under four feet tall, it wouldn't need to be engineered. As far as permits concerned, you guys, hell knows me, I wouldn't see a reason to have a permit. I mean, the city thinks differently. All Pam has done is cut a notch into her yard and put a retaining wall in. It's a stacked block wall, it can be removed. You could take that wall apart in two hours with a crew. There's no utilities on that side of the street. The gas and water are both, they do come down, but then they cross over, because south of this property, for about 500 to 800 feet, is steeper yet.
Is what?
It's steeper yet. The yard, it comes, I mean, it comes completely down to the, we got permission from the landowner to the south to, we dug up the side of her foundation, because it had a lot of cracks in it, to place dirt, because there was nowhere to place dirt. There was no place to put gravel. I got in trouble for putting a load of gravel in the street. There's no way to put gravel in the yard, I couldn't even back a concrete, a dump truck in.
Yeah, because it's, it doesn't look very steep there, but when you drive by your house, it's pretty steep, the driveway is.
Yeah, I mean, I have a full-size, one-ton pickup, and my bumper drags if I back out of her driveway straight.
Yeah, that's the, that was my question to you. One of the options here is to have it pulled back, how would that affect her driveway?
Well, if we pull it back, her water meter is right there. Now we're exposing the water line, because it's following the grade of the hill to go into the house. So now the water line has to be lowered. You're going into an engineered wall, so you've got an engineering expense, probably lose both oak trees, because you're tearing out all the tree system, the root system, to get back to the property line. I agree, if it's illegal, it's illegal from the standpoint of in the right-of-way. But as you go further south down this property, it gets steeper. And Pam is just trying to, you know, her husband passed away here a year and a half, two years ago, and that was one, you know, her husband, before he passed away, said, if you're going to stay here, make this where it's feasible, where it's livable, where you can have company and stuff. If we parked on the side of the street last winter while we were working, even in a full-size truck, my door would hit the, would hit the yard.
Oh, no, I agree with that, I can see that.
And anything with that wall can be removed, like I say, in a couple hours, if they needed to take that whole wall out to put a, whatever, utility. Most utilities are done trenchless excavation now anyway. They're not going to replace the water line or the gas line through there on that side. There's nothing on the south of the property.
Thank you, sir, for your input. Mr. McDonald, do you, can you collaborate that story, or do you have, I know you've got problems with this, you know?
Which question, ma'am?
Yeah. One of the options is to have her move it, how far back would the wall have to go?
If the wall's back to the property line and they want to have a nice yard, it starts to be probably five to 10 times the expense of this wall. Plus, they're not going to have a yard.
Yeah, you won't have.
I don't know why we've got...
You know, the distance that we have to go back, that far.
Yeah. Is it back to where the trees are, where the wall is around the trees?
It's hard to tell, but this is, there's a water meter, I think it shows up in one of the pictures, it's about right here.
So it's in the middle of the two areas?
The wall would be right, almost, it'd have one or two feet by the tree wells that you'd have to walk.
Yeah, it becomes a very substantial wall. Kind of, somehow in the past, they let a lot of houses get built with these crazy steep driveways.
Yeah.
We've got better regulations on that now, you don't see that. And if that was, house was to be built today, it'd probably be a different type of a house than, because we would, we require the driveways have space for future sidewalks. So it would have been, in this picture, it would have been basically flat down here instead of starting straight from the edge of the pavement going up.
And it's in that era when, I mean, they made the law so there would be no future sidewalks or anything like that, that's just that.
They said there wouldn't be any sidewalks on Osage, if you remember how much fun that was. Similarly, had a very steep driveway, we had to narrow the street up. It was a very contentious issue. So, but yeah, moving that wall back is considerably magnitude...
Would they have to remove the stairs, or can the stairs, could the stairs stay?
The stairs probably fine, it's just the wall and...
Moving the wall back, showing our future...
Well, the steps are down and encroaching too, so if you're going to do one, you've got to do the whole project.
Right.
And I think that's totally asinine. I don't know what kind of money they've got invested in this.
It looks nice.
It does look nice.
$26,000.
I'm sorry?
$26,000 is my investment in the whole front yard.
It's going to devalue her property, I believe, if you've got a six or a seven-foot concrete retaining wall running up there, or even a wall of this block, plus the additional cost. If this is $26,000, so it's going to be $52,000 to, if not more, to move it and rebuild it.
Yeah.
I'm still under the consensus, like Mr. Preisinger said, if there was an accident and somebody hit the wall, could they sue the city? They could sue us if they hit the ground. So what difference does it make?
Well, okay, option number two is, require some sort of legal document to be filed with the deed of the property holding the utility companies and the city harmless for any issues associated with the wall. Mr. Dawson, how would that protect us from Commissioner Preisinger scenario, or, you know, anything done in the future that this wall would need to be done?
If that document is prepared and then filed with, you know, with the deed, then it'll protect everyone. It could be done.
I'd be okay with that.
So I suggested up front.
All right. I'm going for door number two then.
The property owner would have to be willing to do that.
Are you okay? Would you be willing to do that?
I'm willing to accept the expense that it would take if the gas or the water meter needed to be accessed. I don't know about accepting the responsibility of somebody hitting my wall and suing the city. Are you saying that if they sue the city, I have to pay?
No, they'd be suing you.
Well, and I have homeowner's insurance, but I can't, if they decide to sue the city, I don't want to pay that, because they're going to sue for a lot more.
Yeah, we have bigger, deeper pockets, so we don't want to be, we don't want to...
What we want to do is, and pardon me for pointing, is to fix a piece of paper, a document, probably to your abstract or your deed, that states what we just talked about, that the city incurs no liability from the wall. And that also protects if you sell the home, or, you know, God forbid, all of us are going to die, if you die and the new owner gets it, that they're protected, they're aware of it, because it's attached, that's what it's your abstract, so.
Okay, my suggestion is that if there's at least an open consensus that we look at number two, that we give her time to talk with Mr. Dawson and maybe talk with an attorney, if we're attaching some type of document to the deed, that she has time to fully realize what she's doing and we do, and we come back with this. The wall isn't going anywhere, there's no emergency with this, but I really want her to understand fully what that would entail. And you need some time, because right now, it's all very emotional, and I'd like to have her consider that with a clear head.
We can table it for two weeks, I believe.
Let's do that.
If two weeks is enough time, that'd be the 25th, which would be, the previous Thursday would be when we'd have to have that item. I don't know that that's enough time to draft a, an add-on to the house. I mean, we could, we could see.
Like I said, I'm willing to accept the cost of the water and the gas line, you know, and if you have to attach something to my deed or whatever, then...
And I would strongly, I would strongly encourage you get, you know, because we have our attorney here protecting us, so that you're clear on that's what you're doing, I would strongly encourage you to get some advice to do that, and that we take a step back. And if it needs to be a little longer than two weeks, are you okay with that?
I am.
To do that, I ask.
The wall's built.
The wall's built, the wall's built, it's not going anywhere. And she needs to know that if we, you know, there's a deed, something attached to her property, I want you to be fully informed what you're up against.
And we would certainly provide any answers to questions from her counsel, but we would ask that the, that document be prepared by the homeowner.
Yes.
Okay.
One other question, do we have the authority or the capability of finding a contractor for building something without a permit? And that might be a separate discussion, that's not for you, Ms. Henderson. I'm very disappointed in the landscaping company that did this.
Me too, that's my thought as well. I should know that.
You know, so I didn't think I'd need one, but, I mean, that's, that's their business and they should know where right-of-ways are, easements and things like that, and that's should be, they should know all that.
And that's it, that is, that's a basic part of their job, and they took advantage, because most homeowners feel that that's why they're hiring a professional, to take care of those details.
And that's not, that's not a question for you, Ms. Henderson, I mean, we're in the direction, I think we'll work with you. But I'm very disappointed in the contractor here. And that might be a discussion for a later time, but...
Yeah, that'd be another subject.
And I know Mr. McDonald would believe Ms. Henderson. And I know Mr. McDonald would leave his hand at me, or will you?
We've got some ideas here, if you will, sir. It might be a mechanism to facilitate the discussion if the homeowner were to apply for a building permit for the project as it exists today. We can comment officially on things like the handrail and basically the stipulation, you know, as appears the direction the commission's headed for some sort of an agreement between the city and the property, and work that through our attorney.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't forgetting about the steps. I mean, the code calls for a handrail up there. We're going to have to come up with some type of a handrail on it.
Well, insurance companies usually require it.
The insurance company's going to require it.
They require that on the fine.
So.
I'm sorry. Devilies don't have a handrail on the corner. I'm sorry. Devilies don't have a handrail on the corner. On the thirty, on the corner. No, they don't. No, they don't.
Okay.
That's, I mean, there's lots of properties that will have homeowner's.
We want to table this for what kind of time?
Yeah, we'll wait to hear from the property owner and bring it back as soon as possible. If we don't hear anything in the next four weeks, we'll.
Just table it with an objection.
Right. We'll get it worked out, Ms. Henderson.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Due to the time, let's take a ten-minute break.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'll put it on the left, don't press.
About now. We got to get something wet.
He's good.
He's waving.
He's waving.
Seems good whenever you're.
Yep.
And the person I talked to last night was.
Okay, we're back in session. Number 10 is the mayor's appointments, and to the commissioners, I would move that we appoint Debbie Denny to term any 4/15 of 2019 for the Leavenworth Preservation Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Thank you. I quartered a report from the Convention and Visitor Currell.
Christie will handle this tonight. She's been out of town promoting the city, so we had to reschedule it to tonight, so I'm sure she'll make it nice and brief for us.
I will. I will. Make as brief as I can. Mayor Dedike, commissioners, nice to see you this evening. Just, I'll kind of hit on the highlights and that and due to the time tonight. So I wanted to let you know, I'm kind of working with several of the area managers, dinner managers of the hotels to start a quarterly meeting with them. So that's, I think, lend to some open communication between everybody and that. So hopefully, within a couple of months or a month or so, we'll get the first meeting scheduled. Like Paul had said, I've been attending a couple trade shows and that. One was a meeting specific, and the other one was group tour specific. So hopefully, we'll get some leads back from them, and we'll continue to follow up with those appointments as we go. Social media is looking pretty good this year. We're still doing, our Facebook is looking pretty good. We just now, today, promoted the AVT Traveling Wall again, and so we're boosting that. So I think we're going to have a really nice turnout for that wall. Twitter is still doing good. Our Pinterest is doing well. Website is still doing well as far as, had some people visiting it, so over 20,000 page views in the last three months, so doing pretty well. A lot of unique visitors still visiting it. Our e-newsletter that we send out twice a month, and that is still doing pretty well with an open rate of about 21% versus industry of a 15% open. So we're a little bit above industry average on that. We're getting ready to do our 2017 Visitors' Guidebook. We did have to reprint the 2016. We've had mailed out 93 direct inquiries since the last time I met, and we've handed out almost 12,000 visitor guidebooks this year and that. So it's still doing well as far as the guidebook. Our print advertising, we've arranged for four different ads to be running. Won't go into those too much, I guess. Our online advertising is still going really strong. Our top referral is from our travelcancis.com, and that's the state website. And we've got several different headings and several different categories on that website and that. So hopefully, they'll be sending us quarterly reports on what kind of hits and click-throughs that we're getting on our headings. So our PR media, we've gotten a couple of different magazines in the area to do some coverage on us. Casey Going Places Travel Guide did a third-page ad basically on the CW Parker Carousel Museum and that, so that was nice. It covers pretty much all of Casey metro area. Candle Queens was in the Kansas Magazine in the summer issue, and then Going on Faith Tour Magazine. We were touring Kansas Treasures was also highlighted in there for that PR. Groups and tours, we've got five new group tours booked, and next year, two, well, seven actually, but two of those are with the, one of them is with the city, our sister city of Japan and Australia will be visiting us next year. And so we'll be working with them to come up with some itineraries and that, so that should be really pretty interesting. And as far as our meetings go, what we've been doing, we've been keeping track of how many group tours we've had this year and how many meetings. So far, we've had 19 group tours and over three meetings booked through us. And when we added up the attendees, it's 960 attendees between the group tours and the meetings. And we've been keeping track of the economic impact that those make as far as our paying our tour guides and eating and doing all of that. So just with those 960 attendees, it's, average dollar has brought in $45,169 in direct economic impact, and that doesn't include any of the other impact. And so the state usually says like $100 per person if it's overnight, or $50 for bus tours if it's just a day tour. And so basically, what I did is I kind of did an average of $75 and took that times the 960 people, and we come out to about 72,000. So that's actually pretty close to what we've been, what we were budgeting, or what, not budgeting, but what we had set at $45,169. So we'll keep continuing to track that, and we've got a couple of good, big meetings coming up. The Kansas Museums Association will be here November 2nd through the 4th, so that's approximately about another 125 people that will be here for that meeting. The combined arms center in Fort Leavenworth estimated that the number of leisure travelers to the fort in 2014 was 76,294. So we're kind of using that, that those at least 76,000 leisure travelers most likely visited Leavenworth before they went to the fort too. So we're kind of using that as a gauge, or I was using that as a, as a starting point to try and figure out how many leisure visitors are actually visiting us and that. So the state opposite tourism for a group or a couple uses $334 as an average amount that a couple would spend in a community. And so if you take that 76,000 and divide it by two, and then take it times the 334, you're coming in with almost 12.7 million dollars to the economy in indirect and direct spending. So makes a difference when you can get those travelers to stop in. So sent out, continue to send out our quarterly ad to the meeting planners, and we'll be adding all of these, the different shows and trade shows that I go to, to our database and that. We'll continue to send out advertising to them. A couple of events that, you know, I mentioned the Veterans Traveling Wall that will be coming up October 26th through the 30th, and then some of the information booths that we've been out in the community and set up an information booth. That was the Buffalo Bill Days, Pear Day on the fort, Kansas State Fair, and then the prison break soccer tournament just this past weekend. And then looking ahead for us, we're still working on the Tourism Grant Fund Guidelines, the application and the reporting process, and I think we're on the study session for October 18th to present that to you. And working on some new rack carts, a meeting planner's guidebook, and then our visitors' guidebook. So we've been busy.
Sounds like it.
It's good. Any questions or something that you'd want me to follow up on?
Very good report. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Number 12 is consider city policy for Title VI.
Taylor Tedder will handle this item.
Good evening, mayor commissioners. The Title VI of the Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin in programs that receive federal funding. The cities historically complied with Title VI guidelines, but we've never adopted a formal plan. KDOT is requiring all municipalities to have one on file with them and to resubmit that every three years as an update. Staffs work with them. KDOT to develop the plan. They've signed off on it, and we recommend that you adopt the plan as presented tonight.
Any discussion?
I read it. Looks good. I move that we adopt the Title VI plan that has been put together for the city of Leavenworth.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting, Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Thank you. Item 13 is ZEC Ford Industrial Revenue Bonds.
Mr. Mayor, commission, at the October 4th City Commission Study Session, representatives from ZEC Brothers Development requested that the city of Leavenworth consider the use of industrial revenue bonds, which would allow ZEC to use the city's state and local sales tax exemptions for labor and building materials. Labor on the renovation, building materials on any projects within the project area. The commission gave consensus to put a non-binding resolution on a future city commission meeting, and that's what's on tonight. There are two items that you'll be voting on. One is a funding agreement, which we talked about also, which would ensure that the developer borers any costs associated with issuing revenue bonds, bond council, legal, anything like that. Then the other one is the non-binding resolution. The non-binding resolution is enough for them to begin to use the city's sales tax exemption. However, it does not mean that the city can't halt that, at which point ZEC would have to then pay back the sales tax that they've been able to have abated at that time. Those two items are in front of you. I know that Derek ZEC and his counsel and his partners are here tonight, if you'd like to ask them any questions or if they'd like to say anything.
Has anything changed from the last time that we spoke? Is there any questions by the commission?
I have like one question, and then I'll have a statement to make, but you said on the non-binding resolution that we would be able to.
Rescind.
Call, rescind it. Thank you. We'd be able to rescind it. Like, what would be the circumstances that would cause us to rescind it? Just because we want to rescind it, or what? I mean, it's an option that we have.
It is an option the commission has, as you move along the process. I guess if you didn't feel they were working in good faith, if nothing was happening, you weren't happy with something along those lines, then you'd definitely do that.
Okay. So what would be the commission's expectations that would, what would cause you to rescind it?
Well, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kramer, I don't think that we have necessarily rescind it. This is a non-binding resolution, and then we, it's two months down the road before we approve it.
Yeah, we would have to eventually vote to issue.
We either approve it or disapprove it in two months. It's not rescinding this. This resolution.
I did check with legal counsel. We would, she would recommend, Katie Logan, that if you do choose not to issue the bonds or choose not to go through the process, that then you adopt a resolution essentially stopping the process. But yeah, you're right. I mean, technically, it's before you, you still have to do all the issuance.
And if we issue this tonight, if we issue a non-binding resolution, they can start using our tax certificate. That's the purpose. But they told us last time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maxwell and Mr. ZEC, that we should expect substantial development done on that south lot before we issue, give final approval on these bonds. Am I, are I minutes correct on that? What kind of minutes they said something to that effect, or would you agree with that, Mr. Maxwell?
Yes. So the action tonight is the resolution of intent, and while I would agree it is non-binding, I have no knowledge of any Kansas community that has ever gone backwards on a resolution of intent. A resolution of intent is saying that the council will go through and do the bond issuance, and so as we're going to start spending serious money and now counting on not paying the sales tax because of this action, we will, you know, we will be counting on coming back and doing the bonds, and the only thing we need to do is work on the financing and work through bond structure and get all of that done with your bond council, and this is a little bit of your outside counsel. So we very much are counting on it. But to your question, mayor, yes.
Once again, he's the mayor.
God, I kind of, mayor, councilman, to your question, and I apologize, to your question, yes, we will absolutely be starting construction on the facility in the coming weeks, the current facility, and then we'll be starting construction on the south side following up shortly thereafter. Confirm that again with Mr. ZEC.
I thought the south side parking lot or lot was going to be started immediately. That was the first thing.
We are starting it very, very soon. All of this is months, not many months. It is very, very soon. We should be starting these weeks coming up on the north side, and the south side will follow shortly thereafter. And so I do not believe we will be coming through with a bond ordinance prior to the time that we have started construction on the south. We just need this resolution of intent.
And you also know, as we discussed last week, that the city's sales tax rebate and CID freeze is substantial, if it's not substantially complete by December 3rd, under current agreement.
Yes, we understand the current agreement.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
I would echo that, I would agree with Mr. Maxwell, that if the resolution of intent is not binding, but it substantially means that the city approves that. That'd be a good practice for forward development incentives to not, if you're going to go forward, go forward.
And then when we consider the funding agreement, the funding agreement is really the industrial revenue bonds?
No, the funding agreement is just the developer acknowledging that they will pay all costs associated with bond council and legal. It doesn't have anything to do with the bonds themselves. Normally, we would do that in-house, but since it was coming back for a non-binding resolution, we would have hadn't put it on the agenda tonight.
So it's just the question.
Thank you, sir. Counselor. Is there a motion on, A, consider funding agreement with ZEC Ford?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Begin, Commissioner Weekly.
And the reason I'm saying no on this is because, not, and it came out, not because, and I, some people, that this is any type of punishment for them not starting the project. That's really not it at all. I'm saying no on this because this is the fourth incentive that's been added to this package, and it's already a very generous incentive package on this. They've got a property tax rebate with a potential of 1.4 million. They've got a sales tax rebate that over, it's over a 20-year period on all of these incentives, that that's $2 million back to them. And the Community Improvement District, which is, you know, best of them, that's the additional sales tax that they offer. That's a $9 million incentive package on that. My other thing is that, my concern is that negotiating this incentive agreement in the middle of the project on that is setting a precedent that by adding an additional fourth incentive on this, I think we're setting a bad precedent. On this commission, I said, for already a very rich incentive package on that, it sets the bar higher and, you know, for what future projects would hold possibly on this, although every deal is individual on that, but it does set a bar of what we've established as our incentives that we're willing to offer. It's a negotiation project, process that goes back and forth, and sometimes it's okay to say, no, we can't offer these incentives. I think that this is potentially 900,000 in revenue that we would be losing even if for a $9 million part of this project on that.
I don't want to argue with you, but I think you're wrong.
It's 10%. I just took, I just took.
Well, that's total tax.
That's total tax. But this also is asking for the sales tax that goes to the state and the local. It's just, it's not just impacting ours, but more or less, it's the fourth trip to the well, to me. And that's, you know, where do you, you know, where do you draw the line in good faith that we've already negotiated an agreement? This should have been asked for upfront where we could consider it with the whole package of incentives. So my vote on it is no.
And a yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Before I vote, I want to, let's say it is a $9 million project, nine and a half percent tax, that's if 100% of materials were bought in the city of Leavenworth, if they're bought in Wichita, St. Louis, whatever else they be, whatever their tax rate is, I would doubt that much of the materials for this will be bought in the city of Leavenworth. An example I used, I'm sure someone's going to run over to Home Depot and buy a couple hundred bucks worth of two-by-fours when they're running a little bit short, but, so, I don't see that the city is losing anything. I see all of this coming to a screeching halt, things aren't completed by, are substantially completed on that south property by December 31st, because this other funding automatically dries up. So, I, the funding agreement, once again, is that they are paying for all the bond. The city is not at risk here of putting any money out, or losing any potential money of any impact. So my vote is yes.
Okay.
That passes four to one. B, consider the resolution, B, 2150, non-binding resolution of intent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second, begin with Commissioner Weekly.
No.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And same point I made the other time, on the other issue, I'm voting yes, but I also know this project could come to a screeching halt in about seventy-five days if things aren't moving. My vote is yes.
Passes four to one. Okay, number fourteen, item fourteen, Ferguson Properties, request to amend development agreement.
Johnny, you want to come up?
Thank you, Commissioner. I thank you for hearing me last time, and if I recall, there's some missions desire to take an opportunity, a little time to review the documentation that was presented at the hall, and you had the proposal, the market study, et cetera. I wasn't sure whether you had a plan, a site plan to show both hotels, but if you don't, I borrowed it from your heard. Maybe you could circulate that to the commission, but... There are several reasons, and I'm here really to respond to questions, but if you don't take a moment to make my case, I would like to do that. Number one, we heard tonight that there were 76,000 people that came to the community, and of course, our opportunity is to keep and capture those people, and have them eat here, buy gas here, buy clothes here, and sleep here. That's what the business I manage is trying to get and stay overnight. We provided a study that showed that influx of military personnel needing lodging was going to dramatically increase, primarily because of the advent of the warrant officer program, coming of the sergeant major school, the tremendous increase in the facility, the National Guard, where they're going to start bringing in thousands of their soldiers every year, and sometimes as many as 2,000 soldiers at a time. In such case, we couldn't handle that in the lodging facilities anyway. But this has all come about because of the post, and what you all have done to provide accommodation for them. I think everyone knows that we won the hotel opening of the year, we won several awards from Marriott because of the way we take care of that soldier, and also the other guests that get married and spend the weekend and whatever, but it really shows in the study that regardless of whether all hotels are up and running at the same time, there's going to be more than enough business for all of us. What we are losing out on right now is the large class. Because of sequestration, the military is condensed and combined, the units, excuse me, 165, 166 people in a class, they don't like to separate those. They won't put some of them in Fairfield and some of them downtown in Hilton. They like to keep them in a campus setting, which is why they go now to the airport, and why they're go to Legends, because they can accommodate the larger classes, and they can walk between the buildings, and they can have night meetings, and this is very important for their entire program. And what we're proposing, and more than that, is a campus of 167 rooms, maybe 168, and would allow, have the soldier and or spouse be able to traverse between either building, one of them is a long-term stay, extended stay, Town Play Suites, and the other one is a normal motel or hotel. And they're going to have a area, they can have a fire pit, they can go out and cook and barbecue if they want to, they can smoke a cigar, drink beer, and not have to worry about getting in a car and driving them. So this protects their career, it also protects the general economy. So, we think it's a good project, it's total investment of about 22 million dollars. We think that with that mousetrap, we can bring in more business to our community, because we're all of us together. And we are already furnishing rooms, or actually booking rooms for the Hampton, we also look for over at the airport, because we're the bill-to-place for the hotel. If they're not put on the Holiday and Express on base, they come to us first, and we want to maintain that position, we do not want to lose it. My idea is that inasmuch as the other grid did not, was not able to start their funding in March first when they were supposed to, that this timeframe that was there this year to get up and running is gone. I mean, we're living into winter conditions at this point, so no matter what happens, it's probably still going to be March before anybody can get started. And so, what I'm talking is two, three, four months difference between an opening of a new hotel downtown versus my hotel, other fourth metric problem, that's like a drum and a bucket. And so I'm asking, moving my date forward, to start the April 1st, and with that answer questions.
Commission, have any questions, Mr. Ferguson?
Mr. Ferguson, good to see you again, I'm sorry that I couldn't see you, still you remind me of Stan Mucial, so I said that, I know, five, six years ago, but you said 22 million dollar investment, that's for both properties, right? You're not putting 22 million in the new one?
No, it's both.
It's current property plus the other one?
Right.
And I know that we originally had a March 1st, 2018 start date, if I'm correct, and then we renegotiated with you and went back to October 1st of 2017, approximately a year from now.
It was actually March 1st.
March 1st, 2018.
No, 2017. We actually had a deal in 2017.
He's requesting October of seventeen.
He's what?
He's requesting October of seventeen.
You're requesting March of seventeen?
March of seventeen.
It was supposed to be in eighteen. When we finally got out of negotiations, it was March 1st of seventeen I would start. Then I got a communicate indicated that you felt, because you had an agreement with another grid...
Right.
That you wanted to go to October, you split the difference with me, you go six more months.
Right.
I'm saying at this point, with the advent of the new business, we really shouldn't wait.
No, and I understand, I just want to clarify that, so, you know, we came to an agreement between the city and your company that we would go to October 1st of seventeen. I understand your arguments now, and I feel that, and let me finish here, that we should uphold the agreement we have, because part of the reason was, we wanted to give the Hilton property time to establish their market. But having said that, I'm very disappointed in the Hilton properties, they've had access to that property for at least six months, they've done nothing, I guess they moved a little bit of dirt today, and so, part of that is, we are losing, we, the city, are losing now, because we're losing that revenue from that hotel, as well as the people that will spend money at the restaurants, et cetera, around, so I'm very disappointed with them. And I did that, and part of the reason we did that was a protection for them, but I think that they have, I don't want to say warrant of welcome, but they have not lived up to the spirit and intent of what we thought they would do. And I also know that there's a lot of site work that you have to do, you have to do a lot of demo, you have to do a lot of retention, and some utilities, et cetera. I know that unfortunately, you started last week, and here we go again, another project start without a building, without a permit.
Yeah, that was amazing for me, I...
Yeah, very amazing to us, I mean, we're dealing with professional developers, we get, you know, people all over town saying that...
We had our contractors, and he told me he thought he had a rule, but he did not.
Okay, and I know the thought is, and I'm not an engineer, I'm not a demo or a builder, but the thought is, I don't know that you could finish all that demo work, and all the site prep, utilities, water retention, what, all that's required, before you can get by March 1st. I'd be willing, though, and of course, as a commission, that we grant you a building permit 30 days, within 30 days after you complete all of that work, that it's substantially ready for building. Because I think if I, if we just say, you've got to March 1st, seventeen, and you don't do it until June or July, all it's doing, in my opinion, is poking a stick in the eye at the people down at Hilton, and I don't want to do that, and I don't think you want to do that. But if we say, okay, go after it, do all the proper work, and within 30 days after that's completed to, or satisfaction of, you know, codes people, we can grant you building permit. If you say you can do it by March 1st, which I don't know that you can, but maybe it's June 1st, I'd be willing to move this up, but I think you have to, you know, do the work first, and we'd be, I'd be willing to move it up, but of course, that's up to the commission.
I would tell you that I can accept that. That's not a problem. It falls on me anyway.
Yeah, it'd fall on you, rather than just have something that, that's my thought, I don't, but that's up to, that's up to at least three of us, or something like that.
Well, there's a gentleman in the audience that I would like to hear from, from Equus Hotel, Mr. Molinex, if he'd want to step up.
All due respect to what Mr. Ferguson is requesting, we do have an issue with moving the timeline forward. We had a delay, we were supposed to start July 1st, we officially started contractually September 30th. Yes, they didn't move dirt today, great, but that is the official start. Contractually with our builder, W. Builders, they are to complete the project in September, they're planning on opening in October of next year. They're subject to liberated damages if they don't meet it, the only thing that would keep them from doing that at this point are extreme weather conditions. We all know what winters are like in the Midwest and Kansas, but at the same time, if we get a typical winter, we've already figured some of those days, and with my experience, built nineteen hotels and developed nineteen hotels, we can get through it in a typical winter, we should be right on that schedule. Our concern is really based upon the fact that we are two similar hotels. What Mr. Ferguson described was, hey, we have a fire pit, you know, the only thing different, fire pit, well, in terms of what amenities you offer, we're an extended stay hotel. Our guest is going to want to stay for five to 20 days, we are Hilton's version of the Marriott Town Play Suites, okay? So we are basically identical. And from that perspective, we needed, we felt, and have always felt, it has always been part of our negotiation with the city, and part of why the date got moved, as you mentioned, is we needed some time to ramp up, get our business operating appropriately, make sure that we were able to cultivate our relationships for our revenue and our base business. Mr. Ferguson's in the, he's already in the market, he owns a Fairfield, he has a great property, okay, there's no harm there, and frankly, his success will ultimately lead to our success, okay? So we want everybody to succeed. However, we need a little bit of time here. We're in a different location, he's at the front of the base, front door, we're in the central business district, we think is a fantastic location, we think we can do more with it. We actually subdivided a small piece of our property, because we believe in what's there, we believe there's some retail opportunity also for the future. But I don't want to have everybody miss that we think, and we've been adamant about it, and we, our, you know, part of it's because our investors, ourselves, our lender, they all believe we need a little ramp here to do it. Now, I lost three months of that ramp, because of our delay with some Hilton review and with our lender on just finalizing everything. So instead of 15 months, I now have 12 months of real ramp up before he opens, based on their schedule to our schedule, assuming we open in October, and assuming he opens the following October. But our position is, give us the opportunity to cultivate the business. We feel that was the city's intent initially, when all of this started, that everybody would get that chance to be successful, and everybody would get that promising start, and then we'd let the next guy in. And our, you know, our position is, we need that opportunity. We, to say we're not going to aggressively start selling before we open is not true. We're going to be selling starting beginning of the year, but we're new to the market. Again, he knows what's coming, so he can sell that. I don't know exactly what's here, we know, we need a little time to lift up some rocks, see what's here, figure out what our business model is, and it may be a little different than his, but I'll tell you, they're very similar, and we're going to be going after the same market segments and the same business. If there's any questions or comments, I'd like to hear them.
Any question, any commission?
No, nothing.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Molinex, I know, we as a city, or he as the commissioner of the city, I'm very disappointed in the delays, for whatever they are, ultimately, it has cost the rest of us money. I also know that I'm a fairly frequent traveler in the U.S. and overseas, and I know a lot of military people that travel here, my nephew was just in for a six-week course at the fort. And for most part, people are either Marriott Rewards or Hilton Honors members, and they kind of make their decision where they stay on their frequent flyer card, for example, or their hotel card. I know the Hampton Downtown, obviously, is a Hilton property, and they have not suffered one bit because of the Marriott, or vice versa. And if, and I think that the market is big enough, the universe of people that are going to be coming to this town is so large that I doubt, I wonder if you before can, I mean, they can make a substantial ban in it, but a lot of people will still make their choice. Am I a Hilton Honors guy, or a Marriott Rewards guy? You know, where do I get my points? Because the military allows you to keep your points now, as does the DOD civilians. In years past, you know, that wasn't the case. So people do make their choice based on their loyalty program, where they get their free nights, and they want to go out with their families, and we're on vacation, because most of these are business travelers, we know that. So I, I understand your concern about establishing your market, but part of it falls on deaf ears with me, because of that, because I know how travelers work. And, once again, I'm still very, very disappointed in the tardiness in the start, and if we, and I'm not recommending that we move him from October 1st to March 1st, I'm just saying that within 30 days after he completes all the site prep, I don't think he can get it done now in five months. I just don't think it's possible, but I don't, but that's the reason I don't want to give him the date March 1st, because then he's got something he just, you know, poke a stick at someone's eye, see, I got naan, 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 I don't, I don't, you know, that's not what we're about. So I stick by if he, within 30 days after getting all the site prep approved, which means the utilities, water retention, everything that's involved, or...
Building plans.
Building plans, et cetera, then he can start, and I don't think it'll be March 1st, just my feeling.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing that you may...
You got to come up to the mic.
Step up, please, John.
Okay, so I should, a little bit of the concern, and this is one of the things that drove me. All right, if you look at what's going on at the airport, there's a brand-new 91-room Town Play Suites going in, there's a 104-room Home Two going in, they're not going for the customer coming in off that airplane, they're coming over here to get the customer from the fort. You've got 136-room, brand-new residence in at Legends. There's so many hotels at the Legends, and there's another, there's another Town Play Suites going to go in down there. So these folks are extended stay, they're going because they've got nightlife for them, they've got things for them to do, Zona Rosa, you've got the Legends, we have a nice downtown area with restaurants, so I, that's one of the things that drove me was, there's a reason they're building those, not for that normal airplane traveler. And so I know, I believe what my market person said, there's more business here than we can ever do. There's more business here than we can ever do. We're turning away business, and that's the truth. I mean, you heard that from Carla, that she's had to turn away business because we can't book two groups in. We don't have enough rooms. And so, to the extent you put that challenge on the table, I'm more than willing to accept that. It's on me. It's on me to perform.
Any other questions, advisor? Gentlemen?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the development agreement with Ferguson property, properties to be able to pull a building permit 30 days after all site prep is complete. And the definition of site prep is demolition, water retention, utilities. What else am I missing? I want to make sure that-
Yeah, we would have to bring an amended agree. If you're going to go this direction, staff would need time to go back and go through it and bring, we'd have to amend the agreement. So, we'd have to bring that back, should you choose to do that.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. We begin voting, Commissioner Weasley.
Mark, it's an interesting thought, and one that I didn't consider on that, but... So, it makes what I was going to say before just totally mute on that. But, I don't know, I'm kind of torn now. But, I don't know. For the previous project on the Zech brothers, I just kind of voted no because they were delayed and, you know, and I wanted to stick to the original agreement. And I don't want to, I really don't want to punish anybody for being delayed. It's wonderful when a project, you know, comes in on time and under budget, but that always doesn't happen every time, you know? And this is tougher, so, even with the delay, he's got a, he still has a 12-month window there to do his project on that. I think he can make that timeframe to do it. I think I'm going to stick to the original agreement and the original timeframe on that, you know, because I said, I just hold one project accountable for sticking to the original agreement, you know? I want to stay with that stance on that, so I'm sorry I have to vote no on that.
I want to, I'm not, no. All right. Just to make sure my motion is clear, but no earlier than March 1st, 2017. And for some reason, he calls in the Corps of Engineers and they haven't finished next Friday, he can't start. I don't know if we, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we need to change that motion or not.
I think it's probably pretty well covered. Is there any other motion?
Do you want to do motion, Carla?
Let me just make sure I've got it. I've got, your motion was for Ferguson Properties to be able to pull a building permit 30 days after all site prep, but no sooner than March 1st, 2017.
Right.
There you go.
And that's pending staff presenting a revised development agreement.
I vote yes. I think we have plenty of business here that is going to occupy all of the hotels that we are building right now, and I want to see it get started. Let's do it.
Well, I can understand both Ferguson Properties and Equus' concern about the date and the time lapse. But I think there's enough business here. I agree with Nancy on that, and it's only going to improve. So, I'll go with the motion, say yes.
I concur. I believe there's enough out there that this isn't going to hurt. So, I do agree with the amend, amend development agreement.
As I stated earlier, I think it's fair for all concerned. It's concerned with Hilton delaying and Hilton not answering phone calls and emails and requests for information from our city staff, but I'm not voting yes for that as a punishment. I'm just stating that we do have concerns with our lack of communication that we had with the hotel group there. My vote is yes. Aye.
That passes four to one. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 15 is bid rejection for the wastewater treatment plant.
Mike? Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, commission, this is a request from staff to reject bids received for the wastewater treatment plant, the watering pad. This is related to when we have equipment where we have vacuumed up blockages of debris from sewer lines, that we can dump the tank, if you will, and water runs into the plant, and we're able to scoop up any of the debris that was accumulated. We studied other installations and created the project. Apparently, our expectations and the contractors were two different versions. And we request it to be rejected, and we will reevaluate the project. There are some other alternatives that we're going to review as well.
If there's no question, you need a motion to reject?
I move that we reject the bids for the WWTC watering pad project and allow staff to reevaluate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Begin with Commissioner Price, Senator.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item 16 is change order number one for contract 2016-11.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, commission, this is approve the final payment, which is also change order number one for the project on Cherokee Street that would replace the existing brick arch with a new concrete arch. I've got some pictures, kind of flipping through up here, showing some before and after conditions. The original contract was awarded back in February. Contractor kind of got with the program, got it approved or constructed, and is open for traffic in August of this year. We worked through a few issues on the project, but it was open for traffic in August, and we are ready to close it out for the year. The change order totals about $22,000. There's three or four different pieces of that. Interestingly enough, we didn't underrun anything. These were all extras, so there's no offsetting things. There was a driveway agreement with one of the easements that we obtained that was not part of the plans that we added after the award of the project. There was a calculation error in the plans on driveway construction that added an additional $4,500. Contractor built the sidewalk and driveways according to the plans. Turns out that that didn't work well when it rained really hard, and we said that's just not going to work, and we directed them to remove and raise them up to better contain the water and avoid it running over the sidewalk into property owners' yards. This one's a little esoteric, and the wing walls were designed to KDOT standards. However, the backfill, which was specified, was not a KDOT standard backfill, and based on the size of these wing walls, they didn't want there to be any problem with down the road if they didn't work right, that they could be an issue, is what was the backfill. So, we direct contractor to substitute KDOT backfill rather than standard backfills in slightly different specifications, but they were a huge part of this project. And lastly, we added $2 million in paving modifications in the intersections to remove some bad pavement and improve driveability of the project.
Who engineered this, Mike?
This was Wilson and Company.
It seemed to me they would have some liability because most of your mistakes are done by the engineers.
Well, I don't know that they were mistakes. The only one that was an issue really was the planned quantity for the driveway that wasn't included.
Well, that, the elevation on your sidewalk.
They thought they understood what we'd asked them to do for the way the driveways were originally constructed, and we reviewed the plans and didn't notice that it didn't meet our driveway standards. They thought they had reviewed that with us. I believe they probably gave us the opportunity to comment on the plans, but it was clearly not going to work, so we revised the plan or removed and replaced it. So, and whose fault is it? I don't know. It's a million-dollar project, of which a fairly small number is something that the city did not specifically direct that be done.
Is there any other questions, by commission?
No.
If not, is there a motion?
I move that we approve change order number one for RA NOW construction for additional work performed in the amount of $22,359.88.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin, Commissioner Weasley.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Number 17 is bids for Performing Arts HVAC project.
Steve Grant and Parks and Recreation.
And you're still awake, Steve.
And I'm still awake, bringing up the rear tonight, so, thank you, Paul. Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. This is, the issue is to review the bids received for the HVAC upgrades at the Performing Arts Center. During the budgetary discussions last year, due to the enormity of the project, we decided to phase it out over three years. So, this would be the first phase this year. Basically, this phase addresses four key areas. The cooling system in the building, the electrical service to the Performing Arts Center, a digital temperature control system that will, that will control all of, all of the phases once it's all put together, including the boiler system and everything, and then also the roof hatch to give better access to the rooftop of the building. The one that is currently there is, well, quite dangerous. I would just say it's clear up in the back, and you crawl on your hands and knees, and this would be one that would be towards the front of the building, because there are condensers on the rooftop that need to be, need to be addressed and serviced regularly. So, with that thought in mind, bid package was put together. We did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting September 26th, where we had five prospective bidders show up at that meeting. Bids were opened on Tuesday, October 4th. We received one bid from DiAgostino Mechanical Contractors. Also included in the bid, there's two compressors in the building. One was just completely rebuilt about three years ago, so we're not touching that one. The other one has been out of service for quite some time, has completely failed. That is one that we are replacing as part of this bid. As an add alternate, in the bid, we asked for a replacement of what's there. Add alternate, we asked for an upgrade of what's called a tandem scroll-type compressor. Generally, add alternates aren't cheaper. This one actually came in cheaper due to the new technology and advancements and how old it, what we have there. The labor costs are actually considerably less getting it installed where it goes in that building, clear down in the basement. So, with that, like I said, we received one bid from DiAgostino for all four parts totaling an amount of $95,635. I'm sure you're all well aware, DiAgostino has done quite a bit of work for the city at the community center, the library here at City Hall, wastewater treatment plant. Nothing but satisfactory work on their part. So, with that, staff recommends the bid from DiAgostino to include the add alternate scroll-type compressor in the amount not to exceed $95,635. There is $121,550 remaining in the 2016 CIP for that. You might have noticed in your fiscal comments that you received that it's a much higher number, that as included in the 2016 was, were the design and engineering fees for the entire project for all three phases. We decided to include them in this first one, so that's why the fiscal comments show a higher amount. So, with that, if there's any questions I can answer, also Greg Gladfelter with Gladfelter Engineering is our design engineer on the project. He is here as well to answer any questions or technical questions you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Steve?
Why was there only one bid?
We had, we had five, I had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. We had five prospective contractors at that meeting. Afterwards, I did hear from two other contractors that received request or proposal. They called me saying they weren't able to make the mandatory pre-bid.
Couldn't do it. Okay.
They're all scared to climb up on that roof.
There was, there were some wide eyes walking through that building.
Yeah, I know.
It's an intriguing building, but it's an awesome building, so we're looking forward to getting it done.
On the inside, but on top of that roof.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no additional questions, take a motion.
I move that we accept the bid from DiAgostino to include the add alternate scroll-type compressor in the total amount not to exceed $95,635.
Motion and a second. Begin, Commissioner Price, Senator.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Set agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to submit the claims for September 24th, I'm sorry, 2016 through October 7th, 2016, in the amount of $1,013,771.90. Net amount for pay number 20, effective September 30th, 2016, in the amount of $307,864.59, no fire, and police pension.
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Weasley.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Commissioners, you have anything?
Not me, sir, not at this late hour.
Nope.
I have one thing.
Nancy?
One thing. Sister Vicky from the Shelter of Hope is applying for grants and would like to have a letter of, she asked me for a letter of support for me, for her, for the project. And I talked to Paul, and he suggested, you know, either I send a letter individually as a commissioner, or if you all wanted to do it, we could send the letter as the commission.
I think with all of us on the one letter, it would be sufficient.
Yeah, if I see a consensus, if you'd just direct me to, on behalf of the commission, submit a letter of support for the Sisters of Charity.
What is the letter of support for him?
She's applying for grants, for grants.
I believe there's something in there about vetating the task duty status.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yes, yes.
We've seen that, yeah.
I see a consensus.
Okay.
Mark?
Just quickly, October 13th, Thursday morning, 9:00 a.m. at the Riverfront Community Center, the CEOs of Westar and KC P&amp;L will be there to talk about the potential pending merger between Westar and KC P&amp;L. They have been touting this everywhere they go about coming out to that meeting. If you'd like to ask questions about what would happen, how our local service would be affected, that'll be a unique opportunity to have both CEOs of the community center at 9:00 a.m. Thursday morning.
9:00 a.m. Thursday at the community center?
October 13th at the Riverfront Community Center.
Tom, you have anybody?
I got to speak twice, so I'm good.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move, second.
Commissioner Weasley?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.